I'd like to welcome everyone. I know we all have passions. You're here because you have your passion. And I'd like to put some ground rules. We are a community. Nothing is going to divide our community. That's the premise. We are here. And, and I'm sorry, no clapping either. So, um, the council meeting is a place where you can speak up. You can really express your opinions. The councils are listening and, and the residents are listening too, and everybody's listening. But I would like, remember one of the public comments on oral communications. Louis Sadadi says, "Let's be cordial and let's be respectful." So I know everybody has signs. Could you keep your signs like this and instead of raising it too high? Because we see your signs, no matter, you know, whether it's high or low. And also, no clapping. We want to respect everybody's speech because everybody is valued. Everybody's opinion is respected. We are here as a community. Whether you live in Cupertino or not, we are part of a bigger community. And I really want to say, I'm a very proud Asian-American public official. And you are all, no clapping, and you are all part of the community. And we want to be together. It doesn't matter, we have different opinions, different passions. Let's listen to each other and be part of the community. No clapping, be respectful, and no raising hands too high. We see your signs. And I do have to share, but I'll see the clerk, how many cards do we have?
Yes, Mayor, we have ninety-eight blue speaker cards for Community Hall.
And could you ask the Zoom, uh, Zoomers? We call them Zoomers. Were the rumors, they're the Zoomers, to raise their hands in the next minute so I can know how many there are too?
So, anyone wishing to speak on Zoom right now, please use the raised hand feature in the next minute to speak.
So, by eight twenty-five, I'd like to count how many. We are, public comments usually is for an hour, but I'm going to extend to an hour and ninety minutes. But everyone gets one minute, but when the one hour ninety minutes up, whoever doesn't get to speak, doesn't get to speak. So, if you feel your speech, your passion is the same as the person behind you, uh, be above you, you can just say, "I, I, I agree with that person." That will save a lot of minutes for other people to speak. So I'm hoping that we're in the spirit of, we're here together, and then we are really going to work this out. We are here to listen. Everybody's here to listen. Let us not be divided. Okay? That is really our premise. Uh, do we have Zoomers? How many are there? And I want to say, all the council members has received over three hundred emails. And I tried to read every one of them. Some of them I skimmed really fast. And I understand everyone's position, you know, everybody's passion, and everybody's reasons for being here. So, but it's always good to listen to you again, face to face.
Uh, Mayor, we have about forty-seven on Zoom.
Forty-seven. So ninety-eight here, forty-seven. So one and a half min, uh, hour. So I'm going to put one hour here in, in the room, and then forty, uh, thirty minutes in Zoom, for the Zoomers. And so, everyone has one minute, please. And if you agree with the person before you, just say, "I agree with that person." Or if you can just stand up behind it, we, and not come up again, so everybody can have a chance for that one minute, that would be good. When one hour is up, we're going to cut it. And if you don't get to speak, I apologize ahead of time. So let's start with the first speaker.
Yes, so the first speaker is...
Mayor, for the, for the record, I don't think we actually introduced the item, so...
Oh, I am so sorry. I thought, okay. We are, thank you, City Attorney, for keeping me in line. We're so passionate about this, I thought everybody knows it. So we are going to add, enter number thirteen. Consider taking a position in support or in opposition or otherwise regarding, in response to Senate Bill four oh three, amending the U.S. Civil Rights Act to clarify the existing state law prohibitions on discrimination based on ancestry, prohibit discrimination based on caste or other inherited status. So we are here to, actually, do we have a staff presentation?
We don't have a presentation. I can, I can, I can briefly summarize the staff report and then, you know, give the public the opportunity to, to, to provide their comments. So, you know, as the mayor said, the, the item before council is to consider taking a position on Senate Bill four oh three, uh, which amends the U.S. Civil Rights Act, uh, which is a state law that prescrib, prohibits discrimination in public accommodations and housing, um, uh, based on ancestry. SB four oh three seeks to clarify existing state law prohibitions on discrimination based on ancestry to make it clear that those discriminations include discrimination based on caste or other inherited status. Based on the Assembly Judiciary Committee Bill summary, no city has taken an official position on the legislation. There are both supporters and opponents of the bill. The supporters have focused on the prevalence of caste discrimination within the state's South Asian community and the need to clarify anti-discrimination laws to protect against it. The opponents have characterized the bill as unfairly maligning, targeting, and racially profiling people of South Asian ancestry. Uh, although, there have been amendments to the bill that have mitigated those objections somewhat, but, but certainly not to the extent that, that many opponents, uh, would be satisfied with. Um, and, and there's a full list of organizations supporting and opposing the bill and, uh, provided as attachment B to your staff report. Um, and so council can, by majority vote, support or oppose the, 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 the bill and provide direction to staff as, as to, as to how to, to implement that position. Or alternatively, no action is required if council elects not to take a position. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, City Attorney. Thank you really for the good explanation. And I'm open for council questions first. Do you have questions before public comment for our City Attorney? If not, I, oh, Councilmember Chell, please.
What's the status of the bill right now?
Uh, I believe, I believe it's pending in the Assembly Judiciary Committee. Approbation, so, thank you.
Thank you. We have very knowledgeable audiences here. Thank you. Okay, so if there are no further questions from council, I'd like to open up a public comment. Remember, be cordial, be respectful, and try to save time so everybody have a minute to speak. And I, I'm here, we're here to listen to you. And we're so glad to provide this opportunity to get to know you two. I got to know quite a few of, of you guys off, you know, just having coffee. So it, every opportunity is opportunity for us to make friends and be part of the community. So thank you for coming.
So Mayor, they, each speaker has up to one minute, and then you will cut it off at...
At sixty.
Sixty minutes in Community Hall?
Yes.
Okay.
So, perfect, nine o'clock. Oh, nine-thirty.
Nine-thirty, yes. So Kartik? Please, uh, line up.
The City Clerk will call maybe three people, so we'll line up quickly so we can save some time.
So Kartik, followed by Ajinkya, followed by Prasanna. Welcome, Kartik.
Hello. Thank you, uh, City Councilmembers. I'd like to request you to support SB four oh three. This whole, um, issue opened up, followed by the Cisco caste discrimination case, which is reported in twenty-twenty. The case was, the person working in Cisco faced caste discrimination since two thousand seventeen. And followed by that, many companies included caste in the protected category, including Apple, which is headquartered here. And the Cisco case discrimination, why it went to the court is, the H R did not understand how the caste operates among the South Asians particularly and Indians. And he mentioned caste discrimination is not unlawful. And that is what many people here, here bringing the board says SB four oh three is unlawful. SB four oh three has been introduced to make the caste discrimination is, um, as a protected category. Followed by that, Apple added caste in the protected category in their policy, and also Cisco added. So I'd like to request you to support SB four oh three to save minority among this unscrupulous majority here. The majority should not kill the law protection for the minorities. Thank you.
Welcome, Ajinkya, followed by Prasanna.
Uh, hello, councilmembers. So I'd like to start firstly by mentioning that caste is a human rights issue and should not be just contingent on numbers. caste is a two-thousand-year-old menace of graded inequality with origins in Southeast Asia. It has surprisingly survived in spite of scientific and many social revolutions, and also capitalism. It has not only survived, but also flourished and internationalized itself here in USA, which is evident from the Cisco case and the BAP's temple issue and numerous other incidents. So I urge City of Cupertino to stand strongly in support of SB four oh three to uproot caste-based discrimination in housing and unemployment in California. The only progressive position to take here is to strongly support, and abstaining or waiting or diluting the bill will only help the, um, uh, retaining of these caste-based discrimination structures around the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Prasanna G., followed by Thammozi Sandaraj, followed by Sunita Singh. Welcome, Prasanna.
Uh, good evening, councilmembers. Uh, thank you for taking time and listening to us. Uh, I am here in support of SB four oh three. Uh, today's agenda item is for you to consider taking a position. Uh, as my friend suggested, please take a position, whether it is in support or in , uh, opposition. Historically speaking, people stand with the oppressed communities. There has been a lot of opposition, whether it has to be racism or the transgender rights. Uh, I would like you to consider being on the right side of the history, take a position in support of the bill, and help the caste oppressed communities by giving them the legal safeguards. Uh, historically speaking, uh, we have seen that during the nineteen sixty-four Ramford Fair Housing Act, uh, white Californians went to the extent of passing Prop fourteen referendum to declare that civil rights legislation, legislation was null and void. So this kind of opposition always comes in. Please consider taking in support. Thank you.
Next we have Thammozi, followed by Sunita, followed by Ranganathan.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I am just here to ask the City of Cupertino to consider what they are doing with their vote today. Being, being able to support SB four oh three is to stand with hundreds of thousands of vulnerable Californians who do not have the privilege to be able to come out of the closet like those of us who have braved this audience to do so today. To vote against SB four oh three is to vote against every major Asian legal organization in the state, including the South Asian Bar Association of North America, the California Asian Pacific Bar Association of America, and the Asian Law Caucus. It is completely lawful to add caste as a protected category, but it is unlawful to allow even one act of discrimination. Think about where you are going to stand in the realm of history. Are you there with those of us who are braving violence to speak our truth? Or are you standing with the bigots who will be remembered for their heinous acts, standing against the civil rights for Californians? We ask you to stand with us now and to vote yes on SB four oh three.
Thank you. Next we have Sunita Singh, followed by Ranganathan Srinivasan and Banu Natarajan.
Good evening, councilmember, City Attorney and City Manager. Thank you for providing this opportunity for us to speak. So I am a big supporter of SB four oh three, and I urge you to stand with us and support the bill completely, as is in print. You will be making history, standing with the positive side. We are trying to make every single person in California equal. SB four oh three is not against any one person, religion, or community. It will benefit every single one of you, me, and us, everyone. So if any one of us ever got discriminated, they would have the legal way to go about it. So please, please support SB four oh three and be the first city in California to stand with yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunita. Next we have Ranganathan, followed by Banu Natarajan, followed by Ravi. Uh, welcome, Ranganathan.
Good evening. I don't want to take up too much time. I just want to start off by saying that I am against SB four oh three. As many others in this room, I am a person who was brought up in California, and I have no information on caste, and even on my own caste. And I don't get why this ha, caste has to be brought up right now. And as I mentioned before, I stand against SB four oh three. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Banu Natarajan, followed by Ravi Adumas Adusumili, followed by Ajithi Desari. Is Banu? Okay, so I'm going to bypass Banu. How about Ravi? No? Okay, and you are, are you Ajit, Ajithi? Hello, so what is your name?
Ajit. Uh, actually, I want to yield my time to Sandeep, uh, who is also in line for speaker.
Okay.
I'm Ravi, uh, same. I'm trying to yield to you. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll start. Thanks so much, honorable City Councilmembers and honorable Vice Mayor and Mayor. I represent APNA DB, the largest California's five-one C three of the marginalized people. And we are the very underprivileged minority that Senator Wahab and her supporters claim to represent, but they do not. We strongly oppose SB four oh three. This bill is a weapon to divide our local communities, kill the social justice, and butcher our cultural existence. This bill is not Sikh versus Dalits. It's not Hindus versus Dalit. It's not Buddhists versus Dalit. It is everybody, including Dalits, versus those are anti-Dalits and those who are being misled by the anti-Dalits. This bill becomes law, it will essentially, uh, essentially put the peace in this county and the city in jeopardy. We request you not only to pass the resolution against this bill, but we also write to the Cali, also please write to the California Assembly and Governor to stop the hatred and divide our communities here. The anarchist plot did not work in the local level, so they have gone top to bottom, and city must stop this particular anarchy from happening at the local level. So now, I'm going to give the top reasons why we must oppose this particular disaster. Number one, the bill essentially puts...
Point of order. Well, I don't think we established, are you allowing people to consolidate time? Okay, I don't think that was established. I, I, I think that, I, I think you should consider whether that's fair to other people that want to speak.
Okay, um, so, uh, do you have two people who's...
So he had two people ceding his time, so that would be three minutes total.
Usually, we ask the people to stand behind him.
The council will discuss it. Okay.
I think we usually ask people to stand behind him so it's clear who yields time.
Okay, so I'm not going to add more minutes, just one, one minute per person. How's that? Is that good for the council?
It's up to you, Mayor.
Okay. So everyone has one minute to speak?
We would have actually had other people do that.
Wait, 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 Mayor, please, you're going to have to keep the order here, Mayor.
Yes, so the council do get to decide, um, how to proceed with this? So, um, if you have three minutes, is our councils, um, do the council members want to give everyone one minute and, and one person can speak for the other person? Is that how we want to proceed, or we just want to limit one minute per person?
It's your discretion.
The minute is one minute, and they should not...
Uh, please, uh, please be, please be respectful.
Please only speak when you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm sorry, we, I really wanted, I didn't respect this, so, um, we, the councils, I want the council, my council fellow members to give me some, your opinions.
Okay, so, King Mayor, um, so I think in the past, the mayors...
It's short.
Have allowed the people to yield their time. And then, as a result, we get more, um, organized thoughts on the issue that's very important. So I thought that we should accept that. But then maybe ask the people who yield their time, stand behind the speaker, so it's clear.
Councilmember Feng, what is your...
Yeah, it's more a question for the attorney on, uh, procedure here. We do have the council procedures manual, and I think it speaks to this question.
Uh, so the council's procedures manual, uh, does allow the mayor to modify the time limits when we have a large number of speakers, so we're, we're operating in that situation, and does not speak specifically to that question when we are operating in that situation. Um, so it would be a procedural ruling that the mayor could make, subject to, to being overridden by three votes at the council if, if council so chooses.
I'd like to allow everybody just one minute, um, but you are, you can give your one minute to the other person. That's my preference, but, um, I need three votes to agree with that. Do we have, um, do we need to vote on that? Uh, that's my proposal.
Through, through the mayor, it, it sounds like it is reversed, that you have the discretion to make that choice, and we could override you if we so choose.
Okay, so that's my choice. Anybody wants to, any objections? If not, please proceed, you have two more minutes, because you have two person...
So, few reasons why we must oppose this bill and stop this disaster. Number one, this bill, this will force a state in self-contradiction. Essentially, state itself has connected Hinduism to the caste, and it will put it in legal jeopardy. The supporters of the bill, like Thammozi and her group, also have connected the caste to Hinduism, and it, it'll be a disaster for the state. They are pushing the state to disaster. Number two, caste is the only word that is not universal in the, in also the ancestry clause. So this is going to put, uh, also very unfairly on our communities, and this is going to divide our communities. Number three, the bill appropriates the identities of marginalized peoples like me. Essentially, it says, the bill proposes the caste to be a perceived position. Now, caste and jati is very specific, and you know, you cannot just modify the definition on the go. Senator Wahab has already modified this definition thrice, and you don't mod, keep on modifying a definition of something which has been very controversial. Number one, author, uh, next number, authors and the sponsors of the bill also agree existing law protects it. So they are essentially somehow want to push it with, you know, no matter what. And just interesting fact, you know, all the Cisco case and all the Equality Lab survey and so on, they haven't debunked, they have been silenced, but still, essentially, they keep on bringing this outdated, uh, concept and essentially keep on making circular references. Apple has been essentially put into, uh, put into a misleading, uh, belief, and that will be corrected. The bill is based on the fraudulent surveys and made-up stories in place of data. And this basically divides also our community, including our Ravidasi brothers and sisters who have been misled. In summary, they are behind unity amongst of all, and it's very, 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 very dangerous. They are trying to frantically divide us. Number two, we may, hey, we may be here tomorrow or not, but our kids will be here. So at least in their interest, please stand up for the local community here, and please pass a resolution to oppose this bill, and please also write to the state policymakers. Thank you so much.
Sir, could you remind me your name, please? Was it...
My name is Sandeep, and I'm one of the many, many volunteers of marginalized communities of an organization called APNA DB. It's a local California five-one C three. Thank you.
Next we have, so Ravi and Ajit ceded their time to Sandeep. Next we have Banu, followed by Murali. Is, uh, Banu Natarajan here, or Murali Malipedi? Okay, uh, how about Shailendra Kardi? Mahul Chub? Nermalendu Das? Hi, are you Shailendra?
I'm Shailendra, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, City Councilmembers and staff, for giving us the opportunity to voice our opinion on this controversial SB four oh three. Uh, so I was just going through all the agenda items, and I see that they're all very progressive in nature. But when I looked at number thirteen, I saw that it is related to SB four oh three. So it clearly says that as, since number thirteen is considered an unlucky number and is considered to be a misfortune, so how come this SB four oh three has become number thirteen? So this clearly shows that if this bill is passed, it's going to begin, bring misfortune to millions of Californians and definitely to half a million Indian-Americans. So I strongly urge you to vote no on this frivolous and divisive bill. And also, I initially heard that you read the pledge and you said, "Justice for all." This definitely is not justice for all. This is purely injustice for Indian-Americans and particularly Hindus. So I strongly urge you to vote no on SB four oh three. Thank you.
Thank you, Shailendra. Next we have Mahul Chub, followed by Nermalendu...
Please, no, no clapping, please. Thank you.
Das, followed by Viraj Raut. Welcome, Mahul.
Hey. Hey, dear councilmember, I strongly oppose SB four oh three. This can and will be used to divide my Asian Indian community. Existing US laws already provide protection against various forms of discrimination. By supporting this bill, you would knowingly or unknowingly be part to further an agenda of ill will and divisive politics. I request you to not support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Nermalendu Das, followed by Viraj Raut, and Brushali Raut.
No, Murali. And...
Uh, what is your name?
Murali, and you are a ally, Murali.
Uh, okay, well, what is your name, sir?
Nermalendu Das.
Okay, here's Murali. I'm sorry, was it...
Is it my turn? Can I speak?
Yes, uh, what was your name again?
Nermalendu Das.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, please, thank you.
Uh, good evening, um, dear councilmembers and mayor. So I'm here to, you know, request you to oppose, you know, California Senate Bill four oh three, and this actually promotes and plants harmful narrative within people's mind and divides the South Asian community, specifically, specifically the Indian-Americans. This is bringing in anti-discrimination law for, which is practically non-existent, you know, issue in California, and this reinforces the false stereotypes. The bill is creating a discriminatory policy that singles out South Asians primarily, you know, for something that does not exist. I can say from my personal experience that I'm living here, working here for multi-decades, I never encountered this thing ever, ever in my life. And I don't want my kids and my next generation to basically learn something that does not, you know, exist really and practically, and basically, you know, poison their mind in school, in their friend, and in this community.
Thank you, Murali. That is your time. Next we have Viraj.
This is Murali.
You're Murali.
I'm Murali.
I apologize. He was...
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm yielding my time to... Rishi Kumar.
Ceding your time to...
Rishi Kumar.
Rishi Kumar, Mayor. I will... Mayor, would you like to...
My name is Rishi Kumar. Also, Ram Srirpati is yielding his time. Is that okay? Ram? There is Ram. Okay, thank you.
Uh, just one person, Murali is ceding to Rishi.
Then my source.
Oh, what is your name?
Ram Srirpati.
What is it?
Ram, R A M.
Okay, yes, I found you. So three minutes? Okay, okay, please proceed, thank you.
Okay, um, good evening, uh, my name's Rishi Kumar, and I'm delighted to be here in the City of Cupertino. I see some familiar friends on the dais, and, uh, you guys are doing a great job, and I presume you'll do a great job again tonight. And, uh, you know, ask the Cupertino City Council to reject Senate Bill four oh three and take a stance against it. It is frivolous, it's much ado but nothing, and it will just amplify the Asian hate crime that we have been seeing for so many years now. And, uh, this is not what we want. But let me explain why. I'm a California Democrat, a former executive board member of the California Democratic Party, has served multiple terms in the Democratic Party, and twice elected to the Saratoga City Council, and running for US Congress from Silicon Valley's District sixteen. And I'm firmly against California's caste bill, Senate Bill four oh three. I strongly condemn Hindu phobia that this bill will sheerly amplify. Senate Bill four oh three seems to be the misguided and utterly unnecessary bill. Why are we proposing a law for specific micro-communities based on their national ethnic or ancestral origin when existing laws in California and the United States already prohibits caste discrimination? It's such a poorly planned and misguided policy, and this is what is contributing to California's current crisis and accelerating a decline. The bill from Sacramento is just flawed on many counts, and Sacramento should be committed to a getting things done approach that addresses the underlying failures of a golden state, not this bill. Our surplus of ten billion is now a deficit of twenty-two billion. It's time to get to work, not this bill. What issues are we trying to rectify? There is no historic or legal precedent for caste discrimination in the United States, not, I haven't seen that ever. The emphasis on caste seems absolutely pointless. It's as if we are hunting for a problem when none exists. This will potentially amplify hate crimes against South Asians. Sacramento must stop this action for the sake of action. Let's talk about support for Sacramento's Proposition forty-seven, which led to a surge in crime across California. When will we absorb the lessons from our mistakes? Consider also the recent Assembly Bill two oh five that proposes linking California's utility rates to our income, an atrocious move that is unparalleled worldwide. This is not right. For the rest of my statement, please visit rishikumar.com/SB403. Thank you in advance, Cupertino City Council. I know you will be on the right side of history.
Sir, that is your time, you're muted.
Thank you.
Next we have Viraj, followed by Brushali, followed by Aruna. Welcome, Viraj.
Hi there, um, I have been...
I have been a Cupertino resident for twenty years, and as a voter, I, my request is no on SB four oh three. You need to honor your voter's request, and that's an obligation you all would have. And this bill divides people. It is full of hatred for a certain community, which I belong, which is Hinduism. You should not allow this. You should not allow it in the city. You should not allow it in the state. And that is my request to you. I would really appeal to you to, you know, take this bill and oppose it. Send that message to the state lawmakers. It will impact our community, our kids' future, as well as the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Viraj. Next, we have Brushali, followed by Aruna, followed by Mahesh.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm a citizen of United States, as well as a resident of Cupertino for twenty-plus years. My kids grew up here. We never talk about caste in the house. We are very proud Hindu Americans. We have followed our culture as Hindus, as well as the Americans. Now, if this caste bill comes in, it's going to be a given a chance to the people who want to cause trouble, right? Who wants to create a violations against another human beings. It's just you're giving a bat into them. So please stop on SB four oh three. Please oppose this bill, and please write later to all of our lawmakers to reject the bill. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brushali. Next, we have Aruna. Is Aruna not here? Okay, Mahesh?
Yeah, can I get the twenty seconds that she missed out on? Thank you.
Which last name?
Mahesh.
Mahesh.
Oh, Mahesh, not Arajan.
Oh, no, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Cupertino City Council, mayor, and members. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Mahesh Natarajan, and I am from Saratoga. I have lived here in the Bay Area for the last twenty-six years, and both my daughters are proud alumnus of the amazing Cupertino schools. Personally, we have never witnessed any existence of caste sentiments, let alone discrimination, among the vibrant community members. I'm also a proud employee at Cisco Systems. Now, that company name was talked about a couple of times here. I've been an employee there for the last nine years. So this whole bill was concocted on the shaky foundation of alleged caste discrimination in our great company, where discrimination in any form is not tolerated. The case was flawed from the get-go and has been thrown out by the courts earlier this year. What this bill is doing is causing unnecessary division.
Thank you, Mahesh.
Among the Indian community. Oppose four zero three.
Next, we have Sashi Bagur, followed by Sri S, followed by Debra, Debra, Debra Brata Biswas. Welcome, Sashi.
Thank you, mayor and council, for giving me this opportunity.
Might want to move just over.
Wrong bank. All right. Thank you, mayor and council, for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'll try to make it really short. I'm not known to speak quickly or to speak short, but I'll try. The point here of why I'm here is to oppose this bill. This bill is supposed to be something that is supposed to work for the masses, but what it is doing is it's separating out the Hindu Americans and specifically targeting us. I can give you, the examples we're given of why caste should be there is that it's based on last name, you can decide whose caste it is. My last name is the name of the town I come from. My maiden last name was the name of the town my father's family came from, so what is my caste? The other thing that they said was based on food habits, you would have, you can decide the person's caste. I have a daughter who, depending on the stars, how the stars are aligned, will be a vegan or will eat everything. What is her caste? Is she going to change every day? So please, this is a ridiculous bill that needs to be opposed.
Thank you, Sashi. Next, we have Sri S, followed by Debra Brata, followed by Govind Tadakari. Welcome, Sri.
Hi, I am a recent high school graduate, and the first time I came upon the term caste was in my sixth grade middle school social studies textbook, under the chapter Indians. It was the largest section in the textbook, and was the first time I came across the word, showing already how much of a foreign concept it is. Many of us here, if you can't already tell from the room, are Indian, and we are looking to heal. And I don't understand how the introduction of a caste system would help in healing. I have no knowledge of my own caste, and I don't see the point in introducing it as a bill. Additionally, I find it unlawful and discriminatory against Indians, especially Hindus. Having recently just gone through the public education system and now attending university, I know that the introduction of this bill would only make the process much more difficult, and would not provide any solution to healing in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, Sri. Next, we have Debra Brata Biswas, Govind Tadakari, and Mohan Gummalam.
Honorable, my name is Debra Biswas of Cupertino. Honorable city council members, mayor, and staff, I oppose all forms of discrimination. We know the Prabhupada, the road to hell, is paved with good intention. SB four oh three, I believe, is one such intentions. This bill makes us believe that Hindus only discriminate. SB four oh three targets Hindu Americans the same way the German Jews were targeted between nineteen thirty-three and forty-five, ending in Holocaust. Please ask your common sense and conscience, and vote no to SB four oh three, please.
Thank you. Next, we have Govind Tadakari, followed by Mohan Gummalam, followed by Satya Prakash. Welcome, Govind.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members, city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. It's a privilege to come and speak to you on this, about this bill. I think this bill is flawed from the start. It doesn't understand, first of all, in Cupertino, one-third of us are from Indian American background, and we know exactly what this bill is trying to do. caste is typically a colonial word. You can go and reference, I can give you, I have already sent you some references about it, and I think that's where the issue is. So I just want, my ask is that, please oppose this bill. I have put all my details in the email. Please go through the email, and you will understand that this is a very pernicious, very divisive bill. It has, there are no numbers to support what exactly it tries to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Govind. Next, we have Mohan, followed by Satya Prakash, followed by Nitin Kumar.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to be accompanied by the two fabulous ladies who are going to yield their time to me. Is that all right with the council? Thank you very much.
What, just for the notes, you don't have to provide your name, but it would be helpful for the minutes.
Kritika.
Sonali. Thank you.
Namaste, honorable city council members, honorable vice mayor and mayor. My name is Mohan Gummalam. I'm a spokesperson for Chinma Mission San Jose. I am completely against all forms of discrimination. This bill, SB four oh three, however, is discriminatory, converse to what it actually purports to do. It's based on faulty conducted survey for a, by a for-profit organization, Equality Labs, that will make great monetary gains with the passage of this bill, but choose to hide behind the mask of equality. The bill also references a case that was tossed out by the court as a frivolous lawsuit. There have been no cases of discrimination in California based on caste ever. There was a mention of caste discrimination that was happened in a temple. That also was thrown out recently on Sunday. This bill constructed today is completely discriminatory and not facially neutral at all, unlike every other discriminatory bills that are there, that's there in the Constitution. There have been further studies done by Carnegie Institute and Pew Research that debunked the caste discrimination claims that has been made by Equality Labs. I request the council to pass the resolution against SB four oh three. Say no to the usage of the word caste. Stop reverse discrimination. Let's get more scientific. When we are trying to decide on passing laws, let's do scientific surveys, not biased surveys. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Satya Prakash, followed by Nitin Kumar, followed by Pranav Kaushik.
Okay, Pranav Kaushik will be speaking for me, and.
Are you Satya?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, dear members of the city council. I am here to oppose the bill BS four zero three. It's okay.
It's okay.
If it becomes a law, it could result in unfair treatment and stereotypes based on factors like last names, dietary choices, and religious symbols, which we shouldn't have to face. This could lead to assumptions of guilt and discrimination against Indian American, denying us the equal protection and fair treatment we deserve under California law. It's important to remember that existing laws already protect us against discrimination based on our background and heritage. I strongly oppose SB four zero three.
Thank you. Next, so Nitin Kumar, are you here? I do not see you. Okay. Uju Tobi, Pragna Sri, Venkatesh Shrinivasan. Hi, are you Uju?
Hi, I'm Uju.
Oh, okay, yes, welcome.
I'm Uju Tobi. I'll give my one minute to Muni.
To Muni?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So I'm going to need some more volunteers, so I'll call their names out. So Venkatesh Ranganathan and Sai. So, yeah, Satyan. So I need about four minutes. So there are four of them that volunteered, so I have, including my time, it's five minutes.
Okay, what were their names?
Paran.
Sai, S A I.
Venkatesh Ranganathan.
Okay.
Satyan, S A D Y N.
Thank you. And, and yes, and you're Uju. Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and the city council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm Muni Madipatla. I'm a longtime resident of Cupertino. I'm representing my family here, and I came prepared to speak with my own speech, but a friend of mine that was born and raised here, sent me what she wanted to speak, but she couldn't be here, so I'm going to read out her speech, because this is so compelling, and that's what I'm afraid of. Okay? I'll read her speech. I was born in the United States, and I feel compelled to speak today, because this is really personal to me as an American. My family is from Singapore. We have been part of the Indian diaspora for generations, and caste is irrelevant to us. But because I look Indian, I'm subjected to assumptions about caste. I'm a physician. About ten years ago, I walked into the clinic, and my nurse looked at me strangely. She says, hey, doc, my son is in school, and he's learning about the caste system. And I can see her frowning. We have worked together for years. We have examined patients together and socialized together, but now our son has learned this awful stereotype about Indians. The fact that I am a second-generation American is irrelevant. I look Indian, my name is Indian, and I'm expected to have an answer for this. Similarly, other friend's family is from Fiji. She is, she descended from Indian, Indian church servants, slaves, that British brought in the eighteen hundreds from India to Fiji. She remarks to me, my white coworker is asking me about caste. My friend has, my friend has never been to India and doesn't know anything about caste. So I asked her, what did you say? She replies, whatever we learned in the seventh grade in social studies. That's all I know about it. My friend was asked that question because, in the dominant perspective, caste is associated with anyone who looks South Asian. My friend and I are in our forties, and that was an awful feeling for us. Think about how this feels for a brown kid. When I was a student, California passed Proposition one eighty-seven, anyone who was suspected of being illegal immigrant could be questioned by a citizen and reported. There was a huge outcry from the Hispanic and Asian communities. They said, no, this will, this will lead to profiling. You aren't going to question the European-looking person, you're going to question the brown person. That proposition was ultimately deemed to be illegal. When I was at UC Berkeley in the nineteen nineties, the student newspaper would report on crime offenders with a vague description of the perpetrator as six-foot-tall African-American male. The people complained to the newspaper that they were not helping to apprehend the suspects with those vague descriptions. Instead, they were causing harassment and fear and division. And that's how I feel about SB four zero three. As an American, I have never felt so bothered by a legislation. We know discrimination is covered by existing laws. Why do my third-generation American kids need to have the state stereotype them? I've been a doctor for over twenty years. The amazing thing about healthcare teams is our camaraderie. Every medical team I've served with has had at least two South Asians. Discrimination has never come up. I can't find a good reason for labeling a minority immigrant community in this way. I'm convinced that those people who think this is right have not thought it through, the same way Prop one eighty-seven was not thought through from the perspective of a brown kid. So Senate Bill SB four zero three is built on false narratives and questionable data from Equality Labs. That survey gave a zip code for people that are taking the survey to use as a zip code that they are from, right? So it's a flawed data. The survey data submitted by the proponents of the bill was dismissed by the judge in Cisco case, and the Cisco case itself against the plaintiffs was dismissed as well. This is a dangerous and discriminatory bill targeting law-abiding American citizens of Indian origin. The word caste is equivalent to N-word in the African-American community. Please don't impose that on us. I would like our city voter, vote on a resolution opposing SB four zero three. As for the city attorney's statement in the staff report, a simple majority vote is good enough to oppose the bill on our residents' behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Muni. Next, we have Pragna Sri, followed by Archana Shinde, followed by Ail and Ready. Welcome, Pragna.
Hello, my name is Pragna Sri, and I'm here to talk. As a concerned middle school student, I urge the city council to consider harmful consequences of SB four zero three, and address the issues of Hindu phobia, as it will lead to unfair treatment and discrimination against Indian American students, denying us equal protection under California law. Children at school will have hard time with other children when they are stereotyped based on their last names and religious symbols. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Archana.
Hi, I am Archana, and I'm here to strongly oppose the bill SB four zero three. I strongly stand against all kinds of discriminations, and I think that the current state law is already strong enough to prohibit all kinds of discriminations. Passing this bill will not be good in terms of fighting against discrimination, rather, it will only create confusion, and it will open the doors wide open to the ill forces behind this bill, to execute their bigger agenda of dividing the community and spreading hatred. They want to start from the city level, then go to the state level, and then nationally. So I definitely, it is definitely very harmful to our city where people from various backgrounds and cultures are living in harmony from last so many decades. So as a Hindu, I strongly believe that the goal of this bill is to lead unfair treatment and discrimination against Indian Americans. So dear council members, I strongly urge you to not just oppose this bill at your level, but to use your authority and right to the state, to the policymakers, to reject this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You had called me before with Muni, Venkatesh Shrinivasan.
Oh, okay, you didn't, you didn't cede your time to him.
He was four people standing, so I just gave some space.
Okay, okay, yes, okay. Followed by Ail N, followed by Jresh Tobi, followed by Pushpita Prasad.
If he needs time, I can yield my time for him. Thank you. Two minutes.
Two minutes? Oh, yes, sir. Okay. Two minutes, okay? Mayor, yes?
Can I?
Yes.
Okay. So thanks for the time. I oppose completely the SB four oh three. I belong to a three-person minority in India. It's a frivolous bill, and this is a tool that was perpetrated in the British India by British to just to divide and conquer. And of course, there were stooges that carried on after it, and India is yet to reel out of it even till today. And twenty-four years in India, in a city, cosmopolitan city in Chennai, I have never heard this word caste. It's, it's almost like nobody in any of the cosmopolitan cities in India never, ever, I have friends, my, I'm a son of a teacher. Every year, hundreds of students pass out from tutoring from my mother. Never, ever, we spoke or even thought about caste in India. And twenty-six years in US, four states I have stayed. And twenty-six years in US, four states I have stayed, not a single moment I have, this has crossed my mind until Equality Labs brought it. And this is, this is an infliction of pain on all of us. I have two kids in the Cupertino educational system. They have no idea about caste, and their kids are not going to have any idea about caste. And we are just doing things, if history is an indicator, we are just doing things for lucrative later benefits. This is just the tip of the iceberg. If you don't control it now, this is going to have a very bad domino effect. And I chose US because it's a merit-based society, and the first casualty in a caste is a merit. And you have enough proof points, you can go. Once they start applying, it's a toxic tiger tail. Even if you leave the hands of the tail, it's going to kill you. It's going to be fatal. So, I urgently, I urge these council members.
Thank you, that is your time.
Please oppose this bill.
Next, we have Jresh, followed by Pushpita, followed by Satish Chandra. Welcome, Jresh.
Respected community leaders, I strongly oppose this bill, Janukovik bill, and the usage of the word caste in this. We elected you as our community leaders, and we request you to respect and then listen to our pain and our kids that are going to go through and suffer. You cannot stay neutral as this bill is going to hunt us demonically and then, you know, the Cupertino community that has voted, elected you as their leaders. Cisco case quoted over here is dismissed by the Superior Court as it is based on the false accusation and the fabricated data by Equality Labs. The BAPS case quoted here is maligned. The artisans were forced to testify falsely in the court. So, I request and urge you to oppose this bill and pass the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Jresh. Next, we have Pushpita Prasad, followed by Satish Chandra, followed by Dr. Ramesh Chopra. Welcome, Pushpita.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I, there's a lot of wonderful points. I just want to make one new one, the position of privilege. We heard it a lot today, but where does the privilege lie? With the folks who can command opids and announce their resignation in Washington Post, New York Times, NPR, or the folks who have struggled for the last several years to get their voices heard and have run a true grassroots campaign, begging, emailing, and showing up in meetings? You know, four hundred of us showed up in Sacramento. Senators acknowledged it was the largest turnout they had seen, yet not a single mainstream media carried it. So, please consider, where is the privilege? Is it with folks like us who come from India as immigrants and are struggling to understand a complex system, and we are up against privileged articulate activists? Or where exactly does this privilege lie? And the accusation that only those who want to be castists are against this law? I would remind everybody of the Patriot Act, which was defended in exactly the same terms, that only those who wanted to be, you know, wrecked terror would be against the act.
Thank you, that is your time.
In retrospect, we know that was right. Please wait.
Next, we have Satish, followed by Dr. Ramesh Chopra, followed by Sandeep Dej. Welcome, Satish.
Respected council members, my name is Satish. I'm Santa Clara resident, so I'm against all the discriminations, and especially SB 403 is, the way it's classified is totally, it's uncalled. So, the reason why is Senator Wahab has mentioned that enforcement of the caste bill would be done by CRD, the Civil Rights Department. So, Hindu and Indian-Americans, especially in the city of Cupertino, has zero faith in CRD. In the past three years, the CRD has openly colluded with anti-Hindu and anti-Semitic organizations, calling out Indian-Americans as committing physical assault on rapes on thousands of Dalit Americans without any evidence or data. The coworkers of the Cisco system, including residents of Cupertino, were assigned caste by the CRD in the violation of First Amendment rights and accused of importing the caste system without any.
Thank you, Satish, that is your time. You're muted.
This is bigger than that.
Sir. Next, we have Ramesh.
I would like to give my time to him.
Okay.
Vidya. I would also like to donate my time, Lakshmi.
Lakshmi and Vidya, okay, thank you, go ahead.
I got three minutes.
Yes, yes, right, yes.
Honorable mayor, esteemed council members, staff, my fellow citizens, my name is Ramesh Chopra. I serve as a chairman of the Federation of Hindu-Americans of Northern California. We have about forty organizations as, under the umbrella, and we totally oppose SB 403, and I would request you and strongly urge you to pass this resolution this evening to condemn SB 403, because this is unnecessary, it's unjust, and it's been trusted upon us as Hindu-Americans, South Asian-Americans, as Indian-Americans, as Asian-Americans, and it's totally profiling us, isolating us, as well as targeting us and labeling us, as you heard earlier, as bigots, racist, fascist, and all kind of names. And we, as a, you know, we never call ourselves targets out there, but unfortunately, that's what they're making us do that, and you heard our children here, who going to be affected the most? It's not only just us. This bill, this word caste should not be even there anymore, because this was trusted upon us, as you heard from the British colonists on, in India, just to divide and rule. And the same is being brought over here in America, which was never ruled by, fortunately, by those colonists, and we do not want this rule over here, this word over here, the caste, because this is going to hurt us, it's going to hurt our children, our grandchildren, and everybody else out there in the schools, in the universities, and where they work. You heard from a doctor earlier, and I happen to be a cardiologist, too, I can definitely tell you that it's going to affect our children, their mental health, as well as their physical health. They're going to be looking for changing their last names, they're going to be looking at doing something different. This is absolutely unacceptable, and I would definitely urge you to do that. You know, this thing happened in the Senate. We have talked to many senators, assemblymen out there, and they understanding, they say, 'Well, you're coming a little bit too late, but let's start from the grassroots right here.' I think, in the city level, you representing the citizens over here, the residents over here, you heard from a lot of residents who definitely oppose it, and especially in the schools over here, where they're teaching this caste system, which is absolutely unacceptable that we should not have this kind of, these kind of words and these kind of teachings being done over here. And Cisco absolutely was thrown out. Recently, last week, BAPS, and I happen to be a part of one of the temples also, they're also, they're trying to say, okay, some of the Brahmins mistreated some of those labors over there, which was totally, totally wrong. Please, help us out and condemn it.
Thank you, that is your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kendall Singh, followed by Sandeep Dej, followed by Jennifer Griffin.
Kendall Singh?
I think that is.
And Sandeep Dej and Jennifer Griffin? Okay. Welcome.
I can take one minute from him, if possible.
Okay. Did you have a card submitted? What was your name?
Sarinder Sanoyi. Sarinder Kumar.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Sarinder Kumar.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable council members, mayor, attorney, and staff, I'm really thankful to give us a time over here to express our support. I express my support for SB 403. Why I'm supporting this bill? Because my daughter and my son, born and raised here, they've been discriminated based on the caste. On the top of it, in the senator, they passed this bill with the voting thirty-four-one, and then went to the judicial committee of the assembly, they passed eleven to zero. Now, it's going to be appropriate committee, and after that, there will be voting on the assembly members in the second floor. This bill, I urge you guys, please, all the American civil operations societies, California Labor Federation, and other civil rights organizations, please, I urge you to listen to them and engage with them first before you pass this bill. This bill is a remedy, is a panacea for the ills of thousand Californians who suffer from caste basis, who suffer from the caste discrimination. If that woman, Asha Bahab, is Muslim, they are just based on that, they are discriminating. Any senator has the right to introduce the bill if the bill is right. To my understanding, the bill is right, because it has been passed to senator, it has been passed to the judicial committee of the assembly, and it's going through, and all the organization, unions, labor federations, all support this bill.
Thank you, that is your time, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Sandeep Dej. Sandeep here? No? Okay, Jennifer Griffin, followed by Mohul Chu, followed by Aditya Dej, followed by Gargi Dej.
Kirsten, I believe Ms. Griffin indicated that she does not wish to speak.
No, okay, thank you. So, hi, what is your name?
Aditya.
Okay, thank you, Aditya.
No test before 403, and I want a piece for all.
Thank you. Oh. Hi, what is your name?
Gargi.
Gargi, okay, hi.
I say no to SB 403. Please make this bill not pass.
Okay, thank you. So, is Mohul here? Mohul Chu? Okay, Archana Shinde?
I've already answered.
You already spoke? You ceded, okay. And, so, okay. Pankuri Marotra?
Hi, my name is Pankuri Marotra, and as a high school student, it's concerning to watch the harmful consequences of SB 403 and the issues of Hindu phobia. This will lead to unfair treatment and discrimination against Indian-American teenagers, denying us equal protection under California law. I urge the city council to reject SB 403. I feel anyone who is here in this country on merit will not need this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I believe Vidya Setharaman already ceded time, or, yes, okay, welcome, followed by Yagni, followed by Sanjivani.
They give the proper people, she already give the time.
Oh, you ceded time, okay, yes, okay.
That's okay, that's okay.
Okay, Yagni, followed by Sanjivani, followed by Miland. Yagni?
Yeah.
Yes. You have one minute, thank you.
One minute?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, council members. So, I'm Gandhi, living in Cupertino for the last twenty-three years. For the last twenty-three years, I'm living in Cupertino. My kids graduated from Cupertino High School. I work in Cisco Systems for the last twenty-three years. I'm completing twenty-three years next month, and I work in different BUs of the Cisco. So, someone brought up that the bill is passed in judiciary and senate, is all based on the false data and surveys with no knowledge of this data to senators. Why there is a need to keep modifying the bill? It almost modified four, five times. That means this bill is, has no clarity and position. So, because of that, I request all of you to use your knowledge and common sense and say no to this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Sanjivani Dej here?
I was Yagni.
Yagni and Sanjivani.
Okay, so, he was not, okay, so, okay, so, you're Yagni?
Yes.
Okay, and, yes, please go ahead.
As a concerned high schooler, I ask the council to put their thinking caps on and realize the havoc in Hindu phobia SB 403 will inevitably lead to. It will unleash unfair treatment and discrimination in the name of equal protection, which is already guaranteed under the law. Thank you.
Thank you. And, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Yagni.
You're, behind you, actually.
Sanjivani.
Sanjivani, okay, yes, go ahead.
I'm a sophomore, and I want the city council to think about the harmful consequences of SB 403. This bill will not only lead to discrimination in Hindu phobia, but it will also create unnecessary and negative tension in society. I request you to please oppose and pass the resolution to oppose SB 403, and write to the state policymakers to reject SB 403. Thank you.
Thank you, and...
I cede the remaining time to Milandji.
That is at the mayor's discretion, and she is not allowing that?
If you get one minute, or if you don't use the time, you don't, sorry.
That's fine. Hello, my name is Miland.
So, okay, yes, sorry.
My name is Miland. I am Cupertino School District taxpayer. I am from the marginalized community, and I am a proud Hindu. So, whoever is claiming here to represent us but ignoring Hindus are talking about us without us. So, what I would like to say is looks can be deceiving, just like having a disco ball on a Monday morning. When, if you look at the proposed resolution SB 403, and if you peel off the shiny exterior, what you will find inside is a costume party of hidden racial discrimination and Hindu phobia for Asian Indians. I urge the city council to vote no on SB 403 and dance our way to fairness. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Prasanna, followed by Balinder Singh, followed by Maran Murthy.
Myself, Balinder, I give my time to Thamuj.
So, there are people that want to cede their time to me, because we were found out about, we found out about the rule to cede.
Order, please.
We found out about the rule to cede after.
So, let's, for the sake of time, let's, I...
So, this is unfair, because you're basically allowing the opposition to do that.
I haven't said anything yet. I am going to allow that, so, please, do speak up, and let's, I am going to allow So, whose turn is that now?
So, excuse me, people who interrupt speakers are going to be asked to leave?
So, I am going to allow that. If you want to speak and somebody want to cede time to you, I would, I will allow that.
The whole premise of this meeting was supposed to be...
Do we know who is ceding time to you? Can you stand behind her?
And, so, who are the, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Balinder Singh.
Thank you.
Okay, and I don't know your name now.
My name is Thamuri, Sandarajan. So, the whole premise of this meeting was supposed to start off with respect, but you set up a dynamic where oppressed people that are braving bigotry and violence are being forced to speak about the truth of caste discrimination and face hours of denial of caste. There have been many people who have targeted Equality Labs, the Dalit Civil Rights Organization, my organization. I just want to share with you the data that is being denied. One in four people who are caste oppressed are facing physical and verbal assault, one in three, educational discrimination, and two out of three, workplace discrimination. As I speak, people are hissing behind me, they are making fun of Dalits that are speaking out about this issue. Think about what you would do if you had a queer person in front of you and you had homophobes laughing and saying that homophobia did not exist. Think about what you would do when you had young black girls going to school for the first time and facing white families who would not allow them to go into school. This is the fault line of civil rights you are at as the city of Cupertino. Caste oppressed people want a remedy for discrim...
Thank you, you've been muted. You've been muted, thank you.
Mayor? Sorry, Kirsten might have been saying the same thing. I think we've reached an hour. I would recommend adding maybe five minutes because of some of the procedural things we dealt with.
I was just going to say that, yeah.
So, maybe go another five minutes.
How many cards do we have left?
A lot, much more than five minutes.
Okay, so, we have five more minutes, and we're going to run as long as the minutes, so, until nine-thirty-seven. All right, so, let's continue.
Okay, so, is Prasanna? Okay, so is Prasanna available? Prasanna? Maran Murthy, Radha Murthy?
Hello, everybody, this is Prasanna, a very proud ex Cupertino citizen for many, many years. My kids graduated from Cupertino schools, and I stand here to, to request you to oppose SB 403. A lot of fear mongering and an attempt to spread the hatred amongst the community is happening here, and I urge you to do the right thing and reject SB 403. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, I think it's Marju Murthy, followed by Radha Murthy, followed by Mahesh Pakala.
Yeah. Hello, all the council members. I'm here to strongly oppose SB 403. This bill is a racist, discriminatory, and divisive bill. It unfairly maligns targets and racially profiles the Hindu American community. It is actually an unconstitutional, blatantly discriminatory bill that singles out and racially profiles people. This bill will divide the Hindus exactly the way the colonial rule did. The word already comes from the Portuguese word costa, so it's not even an Indian origin word. It propagates harmful and false narratives that caste discrimination is inherent in Hindu teachings, which is so false and offensive mischaracterization. See, this discrimination, caste discrimination was outlawed in India 70 years ago. It comes from all, Hindu Americans here come from all backgrounds, ethnicities, and social strata. This bill will promote dangerous stereotyping and unjustly scrutinize an entire community.
Thank you, that is your time. Next, we have Radha Murthy, followed by Mahesh Pakala, followed by Vinad Kumar. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm here to oppose California's Senate Bill 403, which would unfairly target and discriminate against Hindu Americans in California. It has taken centuries and sacrifices from people to remove caste discrimination. Instead of moving forwards, we should not go backwards, defeating the whole purpose and intention of those people, sacrifices of those people to go in vain. Please spare our children, the future, to make this world more beautiful with love and not make it ugly with hate and discrimination. This bill goes against the very values of exclusion and religious freedom, freedom that California strives for. So say no to 403. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mahesh, followed by Vinad Kumar, followed by Parmjit.
And she is giving me her...
What was your name?
J O T I.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, city council members. I had a long speech, but I'll try to cut it short. Again, Mahesh Pakala, I'm a Cupertino voter. So the abolition of slavery in the 19th century was a hard fought victory against an inherently unjust system that deprived millions of people of their basic human rights and dignity. It took tremendous effort and activism over decades to finally enshrine into law the self-evident truth that all people, regardless of race, deserve freedom. This SB 403 today targets the Hindu Americans community unfairly. Hindu teachings do not justify or encourage caste discrimination. In fact, Hinduism upholds the inherent equality and divine nature of all people. The bill propagates false stereotypes about an entire group. Passing SB 403 would be akin to falsely accusing the Christian community of inherently discriminating against women just because historically some churches did not allow female leadership. Falsely ascribing to the entire community or belief system is dangerous, just based on, on one particular California senator with melee intent statement, who has assured that all her colleagues are complicit in the crime of discrimination against Hindu Americans. And I think they are going to realize what they have done, and they'll withdraw this as well. Just as the abolitionists fought to end legalized slavery in America, Hindu Americans today strive to dispel false narratives about their community and faith. I urge you to stand on the right side of history, just as the abolitionists did by opposing SB 403 and its discriminatory premise. Truth and religious freedom must prevail over harmful stereotypes. Like one high schooler said just before me, caste belongs to the history books, not to the law books, and I'm sure all of you will do the right thing, and thank you again for the time.
Thank you, Mahesh. Mayor, I see it's 9:30.
Because your name has been called out, what's the last name you called?
Vinad Kumar and Parmjit.
Okay, I'm going to have that, I'm going to allow that to...
Vinad and Parmjit?
My name is Parmjit, I'm giving my time to him.
Okay.
Okay, I'll just, this will be the last two speakers, but we're going to go to Zoom. If the Zoomers don't finish their, 30 minutes, we'll come back and use the time, so let's have the last...
Excuse me, if you, excuse me.
Let's have the last two speakers.
You haven't been recognized, please, please sit down. Excuse me, please, please sit down or you'll be asked to leave.
Yes, before I start my timer, I want to say one thing, please. We just find out about this...
Timer is two minutes, right?
Yes, two minutes.
Video, please set the timer at two minutes, thank you.
Not good. Okay, so this bill is not profiling or against anybody. You guys all are very responsible and educated people. You guys have seen the process of what happened in all the state in the process of senators, how it passed in Judiciary Senator Committee, how it passed in Senator Bill, and how it passed into a Judiciary Assembly Committee, all passed unanimously. The people who never experienced, who doesn't know the caste, Hindu people, they never feel experience of the caste discrimination because this never happened to those people. But the people who are being discriminated, it's state responsibility, it's you guys' responsibility to protect everybody in the state all over the place. So we just find out about this meeting, agenda meeting yesterday evening. That's why we just find out, we have few people right here, otherwise we should have been a lot of people right here. So I'm a chairperson of one of the big organizations in Beria, Shiri Gurubdas over Beria, California, and also I represent other five temples, Gurubdas temples in California. On top of that, I also represent 46 temple, who never got a chance to come right here today, but they are, I represent them too. Caste is an ugly disease, which come in the pupil, in the genes, which they cannot live wherever they came from. So they continue discriminating, they continue use the policy right here, otherwise the Cisco case was not going to come. The people are saying, okay, it's already kind of, you know, dismissed case, it's not. It's still, the state is still after Cisco. And all the companies, Facebook, Cisco, Google, Salesforce, why they already start implementing the caste policy? Because they do experience. Everybody has possibility that no one should be discriminated, not even a single person should be discriminated for anything. Same thing, no one should be discriminated on the base of caste. You guys all should make a proper call, support SB 403. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really want to comment, our city clerk, who doing a fabulous job, thank you so much. Okay, well that, we can give her applause. So we're going to go to the Zoomers for 30 minutes, and if they don't finish the 30 minutes, we'll come back to the rumors, okay? So let's start with the Zoom calls. And it's 9:40, so we're going to go to 10:10.
Okay, we will start with Babai Singh, followed by Ravi Danti. Oh, we just lost Babai. So now Ravi Danti, followed by Mukul Sinval, followed by Rajan Desai. Welcome, Ravi.
Hello, I'm Ravi Danti. Thank you, honorable council members. I'm a US citizen and Cupertino resident for the past 20-plus years, and I am strongly opposed to SB 403. I have worked in small to big multinational firms in the Bay Area for the last 35 years. In my daily meetings gathering with my coworkers, friends, not even a single instance of caste was seen or mentioned. I'm super offended and victimized by this SB 403 bill, bringing this caste based bill upon us without a single shred of evidence or proof. This Hindu phobia created by a Waha based bill is targeted at dividing our unified Hindu community. We left behind a caste monster back in India when we all migrated to free America. So our kids and future generation will be affected with this bill, so I'll strongly oppose it, and I request you to oppose this bill also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ravi. Next, we have Mukul Sinval, followed by Rajan Desai. Welcome, Mukul.
Yes, good evening, respected mayor and council members. This is Mukul Sinval from Fremont, California. I spent first 23 years of my life in India, and after that, I've been in US for more than 30 years, spent time on the West Coast, Maryland, Virginia, New Jersey, New York, and now in California. Never, ever in my life I have come across any caste discrimination issues. I do not ask my friends and colleagues what their caste is, and they do not ask me what my caste is. So this caste discrimination story is totally fabricated by vested interests. It's created by Equality Labs, which is a known Hindu hate group, spreading lies against Hindus. Hindu Americans are very successful in America, and especially in Silicon Valley, and these people are just trying to malign them and divide them. We will not let this happen for us, for our children, and our grandchildren's children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rajan Desai, followed by Aram James, followed by Prabhakar Maro Reddy. Welcome, Rajan.
Yeah, thank you, council members. I'd like to thank all the members for expressing their concern against the SB 403. I'm totally against SB 403, and I think JR and Hung Way have, I hope they have done their homework and their due diligence on this. I think the other three council members are aware of that, but I hope all of you oppose this bill unitedly, without any division. And this caste is not at all a word in the Hindu religion at all. And those people who have been talking about this, I've heard about those people that know this Equality Lab and all, they are just misguided, and you know, this is not the right thing to do at all. They should go home and do some new work in their, you know, and then get back to normal and talk about it. All right, thank you, guys, and I hope you totally denounce this and say no to this SB 403 unitedly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Aram, followed by Vina, followed by Nitya. Welcome, Aram.
Yes, I'm asking you to support 403. It's, the Hindu nationalist movement has a whole lot more power, like I'm a Jew and I know, I know the right wing Zionist movement, same thing. They're trying to silence a conversation about the attack on the Palestinian people. Here, we have tons of money with the Hindu nationalists, want to prevent a bill that makes all the sense in the world. If people are discriminating against the Hindus, this bill, the unruled Civil Rights Bill, would prevent discrimination against Hindus. So why they're taking this position makes no sense at all. I've read caste by Isabel Wilkerson, and I've also read portions of Caste Matters by a Dalit scholar. We must prevent the discrimination against the Dalits in this country that is running wild, and I ask you, please, please, support SB 403. Critical that you do that, do the right thing.
Thank you. Next, we have Vina, followed by Nitya, followed by Prabhakar. Welcome, Vina.
Hi, I'm Vina, and I strongly support SB 403. America is the land of equality and equal opportunities, and California has always been at the forefront of civil rights protection. This bill clearly explains caste and why it's an oppressive system. Probably passing this bill will also educate the many people and their children here who claim to have never heard of caste or, you know, claim that it's already protected and banned. But this bill is about having explicit legal safeguards to protect against discriminatory practices in areas of employment and housing. And that, in my opinion, does not divide people, but it protects the rights of those that truly deserve it. I strongly urge the Cupertino City Council and respected council members to strongly support SB 403 and make caste discrimination illegal in California in no uncertain terms and set a leading example to the rest of the nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vina. Next, we have Nitya Krishnamurti, followed by Prabhakar. Welcome, Nitya.
Hi, as a person born into the dominant caste and who migrated here to California in my twenties, I've been privy to conversations that are discriminatory in nature, such as when an acquaintance from my caste who works as a nanny felt the need to add that she only chooses, quote, "our people" and quote, "to work for." I've also seen a catering service in the SF Bay Area promising Madi Sapada, that is ritually pure food, which amongst other things means that it hasn't been defiled by the touch or even the glance of a person from the depressed caste. These show that caste, this employment discrimination exists here in CA based on caste. I also want to address the argument by the opposition that they don't want to teach their children about caste. This is the same argument that the right wing makes to ban books about slavery in the deep south because it makes their children uncomfortable. So I urge the city council to support SB...
Thank you, Nitya, that is your time. Next, we have Prabhakar. Welcome, Prabhakar. You'll need to unmute yourself, Prabhakar.
Hello. Hi, my name is Mangesh Padke. I'm a Bay Area resident for more than 25 years, including Cupertino. And I strongly oppose SB 403 bill as it violates civil rights of Indian American community by stereotyping us. A lot has been said, you know, a lot data points have been discussed, shared against this bill. I would like to add one more to that list. The people who claim to be the leaders of organizations like Equality Labs, they have been caught on camera with the speech of hatred against Hindu community. And those videos will be shared with the council members in the due course of time. So I would request you to listen to those videos, watch those videos to understand the real intention behind this bill, you know, versus what being said on the face of it. So again, I oppose this bill, SB 403, and my name is Mangesh. Thank you.
Thank you, and we're having some issues with Prabhakar. I will try one more time to allow you to talk. Please unmute yourself. Okay, I will move on to Ravi Kiran Singh, followed by Ben Kaila, followed by Padma Tanaru. Welcome, Ravi. And Ravi, you will need to unmute yourself. Okay, we may be having some issues then. Let me try Ben Kaila.
Hi, this is Ravi.
Okay.
Ravi?
Yes, just one, yes, go ahead, please, Ravi.
Hi, dear Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, and City Council, this is Ravi. I'm a US citizen, Cupertino resident, and a Bay Area resident for close to 20 years, and I'm a Hindu. And I urge you to oppose California's Senate Bill 403, which would unfairly target and discriminate against Hindu Americans in California. This bill claims to promote religious freedom and tolerance, however, it does the opposite by singling out the Hindu American community. I thought when I left India and moved here, I won't hear this word caste, and I feel this is totally unnecessary. So rather than bringing the people together, this bill would promote a dangerous stereotyping and unjustly scrutinize the entire community. I urge you to stand up against discrimination by opposing SB 403. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ravi, and I will try Ben Kaila. Ben, welcome.
Hello, hello, this is Ben Kaila. I am a resident of California for the last 23 years, and I'm a social worker as well as a nonprofit president. That is a reality, you have to understand that. We came here with the intention to live a good life here, but after coming here, we experienced it day in and day out. You have to understand, don't, please don't go by the numbers. Go by the truth. What we are saying is from our hearts, what we experience. Try to understand it and help us make your city the first city in California that stood in the, in the history. Make a history by supporting this bill. Please, 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 we are the least, we experience all through our life. We don't want to experience here in America also. That is not the reason we came here. We run away from India from here, escape the caste discrimination. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Next, we have Padma Tanaru, followed by Archana Panda, followed by Anu Mandavalli. Welcome, Padma. Padma, you'll need to unmute yourself. Okay, we will come back to, oh, we lost Padma. Okay, so Archana Panda, welcome. Okay, we will come back to, oh, we lost Padma. Okay, so, um, Archana Panda, welcome.
Hello everybody, this is Archana Panda. I am a resident of Cupertino and a library commissioner and I strongly oppose this bill. I thank Sangeeta Shankar for giving me her time, so I have at least for two minutes to speak my poem and my emotions in form of a poem. American Hindus are content, mature and silent. We never hurt anyone. We are utterly nonviolent. Perhaps that's why people take us easy. We trust everyone, we work hard, we are busy. When we are bringing the world together with our heart, why? Why are some Hindu phobics dividing our family in part? caste is past in India, it's not present here. Then why in America are you making it our future, dear? I am a resident of Cupertino for the last twenty years, will speak what is good for this land. Our step today defines our tomorrow, where we move depends on where we stand. So today I pray to Judy before it gets too late, I oppose this bill. Please do not discriminate. Yes, I strongly oppose this bill. Please do not discriminate. Thank you.
Thank you. Archana, uh, next we have Anu Mandavali. Welcome, Anu.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, my name is Anu Mandavali and I'm here to ask the city council to support SB four oh three. And I would like to explain why existing laws do not address caste discrimination. Caste is a made-up category. There is no biological basis to caste. Therefore, when you put caste under the category of ancestry, it does not adequately explain it. Caste is not biological, ancestry is biological. Therefore, you need to treat caste as its own category and it is not okay to put it under ancestry. The second thing I wanted to say, dear city council, is please do not be swayed by all these people who are saying they never heard of caste discrimination. It's exactly like white people saying that they never experienced racism. Yes, of course, they would not have experienced racism. Or it's like, uh, somebody else saying that they have never experienced anti-Asian hate. Unless you're Asian, you will not experience anti-Asian hate. Please do not listen to these people.
Thank you, Anu. That's your time. Next we have Satya Pradhan, followed by Dilip Amin, followed by Sadip K. Welcome, Satya. You'll need to unmute yourself. There we go.
Yes, yeah, this is Satya Pradhan. I believe in Heir, uh, in the constituency of Isawahav. When I heard about the four oh three, I was kind of taken back and felt so betrayed and started reading about this bill uh, and learn about this. There are a couple of things I would like to point out here. One is about the accuracy of the information they rely on for this bill. And I was an ex-Cisco employee for fourteen years. And, uh, if we look at the case, some people claim that the case is there, but the, uh, the Civil Rights Division has withdrawn the case against the two managers and that is a fact and we can clearly check. The other point I would like to bring up is the intention behind this bill. If we look at the number of changes that has gone through in the bill, starting with caste as a separate category and now it is a, uh, explanation or description under some other categories, we clearly see the intention. Please oppose this bill.
Thank you. That is your time. Next we have Dilip Amin. Welcome, Dilip.
Uh, hi, this is Dilip Amin. Uh, seems like, maybe it's funny, but, uh, the bill is Equality Lab against the rest of the Hindus. And you should know that Equality Lab is a private corporation and if this bill passes, Equality Lab will gain maximum financially. That's some truth to keep in mind. Now, uh, this, we even without this caste bill, uh, this Cisco case was, uh, came to the, uh, was, uh, case was filed. What I mean to say that there is no need for this bill. It is already discrimination, caste discrimination is already covered. Only objective of this task, uh, putting the caste word is to define the Hinduism. Because any elementary schools or middle schools, they are thinking caste is equal to Hinduism. Thus this bill is not spatially neutral, it is an anti-Hindu bill. Remove the word caste and keep the bill as you want it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Sandeep K, followed by Pawan Kumar, followed by Anil Ravine. Welcome, Sandeep.
Hello to my favorite, favorite council members. Uh, my name is Sandeep and I wanted to let you know that I have faced caste discrimination in the state of California by oppressors who actually do not live, uh, much far away from video meeting tonight, about fifteen minutes from, uh, your office. Uh, caste discrimination is, uh, is a sad reality. And when I came to the US, I never thought that this casteist mindset that people from South Asia, uh, uh, migrate to will bring it here. Um, there are bigots before me who, who said that caste discrimination stories are made up. They sound exactly like the bigots who opposed laws to ban racial discrimination in this country in the sixties and even to this day. And caste discrimination for people like me is a reality and we face it every day and it's your obligation to correct that and protect people in minority like me because you do not want to be on the wrong side of history. Thank you. I urge you to support SB four zero three.
Thank you. Next we have Pawan Kumar. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Pawan Kumar. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I'm from Sacramento. My zip code is nine five eight two nine. So, uh, I strongly support SB four oh three. So as you know, SB four oh three is passed in, uh, Judiciary Committee and Senator already. So there were the number of opposition to, uh, too much than our numbers. So I think, uh, I'm seeing on the Zoom, so number of opposition are too much, uh, in the room there. So I believe that, uh, the council members will not, uh, go on the numbers. They will go on the right side of the numbers, not the quantity of the numbers. So please prosper SB four oh three. So, uh, if, if we know before that SB four, uh, uh, Cupertino City Council meeting is going to the, which would be like, then like five, uh, five numbers of more than the opposition, we should be, uh, full of house there, but, but we got lately, so strongly.
Thank you. That is your time. Next we have Anil Ravine, followed by Satish Mahajan, followed by Kamaljeet. Anil, you'll need to, there we go. You're unmuted now.
Yeah, hi, this is Punith. I'm speaking for my dad, Anil. Hello, honorable mayor and council members. I strongly oppose SB four oh three. I am an incoming seventh grader at Cupertino Middle School. In school, many kids, including myself, are taught about caste, yet it is very misleading because of the history books and curriculum. For example, teachers are told to inform students about what jobs and ranks each caste has. Why is the world putting this word into so much hate? After all, I have never heard this word coming out of anyone's mouth in the US expressing hate. Because of this deceptive information about caste, many kids in my school associate Hindu American brown kids like me towards this caste system. This bill promises discrimination between castes to abolish, yet it will only create more Hindu phobia. If this bill is passed, not only will the emphasis on false caste information amplify, it will ruin the coming generation when it comes to relationships, justice and teachings. This will also lead to bullying, extortion and become tough for businesses to operate in California and pound exodus. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next we have Satish Mahajan. Welcome, Satish.
Uh, respected members, thanks for the opportunity. Good evening to you. This is Satish Mahajan, US citizen. I'm living in Bay Area for last more than twenty years. Lived in multiple cities, worked in multiple, uh, cities in Bay Area, currently living in San Jose. So I'm a techie software engineer. Right now I do have my startup, which I started a couple of years back. Now I'm in a position to hire, hire the new employees. And while hiring the employees, do you want me to consider the person based on his or hers past instead of considering their merit? You, you'll certainly say no, right? So I don't agree with this SB four zero three bill. You, there are multiple people who are bringing up the Cisco cast, uh, Cisco case. Think about a situation from a business pers- businessman's perspective that if somebody brings up caste and I have to decide based on the caste, then what I will do. I will not even consider the caste for my hiring criteria, right one. Second and most important point is that I'm looking for office space and Cupertino is in my list. And now it's on your decision, I will decide whether I want to come into Cupertino or I want to ignore Cupertino. Thanks. Oppose the four zero three.
That is your time. Next we have Kamaljeet. Welcome.
Hi there, um, good evening, honorable mayor, council member and staff. I am supporting SB four zero three and I urge the city of Cupertino to vote to support this bill as print. This bill does not hurt anyone. It protects everyone, including you, me and thousands of others. So the council member panel should only vote on this after meeting with all the stakeholders, especially the civil rights organization working on this issue. I urge the city to support civil rights and not let disinformation and biocary derail the rights of all. The only people SB four zero three impacts are those that discriminate. Please stand on the right side of history and vote to support SB four zero three. History will remember your choice to support or obstruct for most vulnerable in California support for SB four zero three. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Nirmal, AKA Ravi Singh, followed by Rohit Sharma, followed by RT Desai. Welcome, Nirmal.
Respected council members and mayor, I'm Dr. Singh. I'm working, I'm a working physician. I'm South Asian Sikh from Punjab, India. My in-laws are Hindus. We both are in support of SB four oh three. I have faced as a physician discriminating attitude from a dominant caste physician at my workplace. Caste discrimination is a mental torture and this is a historic bill to end the caste-based discrimination in California. The opponents are the same people who spread false propaganda back in India despite hundreds of daily atrocities against, uh, uh, Dalits. And this is happening these days and they're the same people, they're doing the same thing in the US as well. Please do not fall for it. This is same like saying, a white person saying that they have not faced racism. So it does not exist. I'm so sad to see how opponents are terrorizing their kids here who will be discriminating our young kids in future. And I wonder also why city has to take a position on the bill that has passed.
Thank you. That is your time. Next we have Rohit Sharma. Welcome, Rohit.
Uh, dear council members and mayors, thank you very much for giving us an opportunity to speak on this, uh, critical topic for us, especially for Hindus. I would urge you, uh, to pass a resolution saying this is a wrong bill, incorrect bill, which is based on the false information, false data. I'll, I'll repeat some numbers which one of our speakers said, one out of four, two out of four, three out of four. This figure looks pretty good, but let me give you another figure, two out of two. Two cases, one against Cisco, one against BAP, both rejected, uh, and crashed the, uh, the survey that was done by this particular organization. I don't even know what to call the name, but this, the, the, the survey that was done, that was completely based on the false information. So the, the, the numbers that we have to keep in mind is two out of two. When we talk about standing on the right side of the history, what do we mean? Do we want to stand with this fact or do we want to stand with the false information? So dear council member, we, uh, and, uh, mayor, we have to make the judgment here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have RT Desai, followed by, followed by Param Desai, followed by Seema Linskog. Welcome, RT.
Uh, good evening, council members. I'm a proud citizen and resident of Cupertino. Uh, our, I believe that our constitution and our law already treats everyone equally and protects us. Uh, so, um, I don't see the point in this, uh, bill. I, um, I don't want my future generations to be discriminated against based on their ancestry. Please vote no on SB four oh three and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Param Desai. Welcome.
Yes, I, uh, thank you, honorable, uh, council members for taking this. I oppose SB four zero three. Earlier, one of the supporters of this bill said caste is in the genes. How unscientific and frivolous is that claim? One of the, another supporter said caste is not biological. The supporters of this bill self contradict themselves among themselves. Point number two, this bill makes a claim about inherited status. I want to ask every American, every Californian and the council, who in America has inherited status? We're all hardworking people, working on the basis of our hard work and merit. There is no caste discrimination anywhere in California or America. So please do the right thing. Please oppose SB four zero three. I have two little kids going in San, in Cupertino school district right now and they face bullying because Hinduism and caste are associated in your text. Please do the right thing. Oppose SB four zero three. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Seema Linskog, followed by Manish Deo, followed by Jagannath Burelli. Welcome, Seema.
Hi there, uh, respected Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan and council members. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak today on this important topic. I'm a commissioner on the city's planning commission, but today I'm speaking only as myself. Whatever the good intentions of the author of SB four oh three are, the impact of the bill will be devastating to the South Asian community. SB four three is deeply flawed. It assumes that South Asians are likely to be racist and discriminatory simply because of our city. In doing so, it is itself racist and discriminatory towards California's South Asian population. It's important to acknowledge the real harm this bill could do. However, it's also important to listen to and respect the lived experiences of the South Asians who support the bill. This is not a city issue. This is a state level bill. It'll be debated inside of the state level. Uh, Evan Lo has recognized complexity of the issue and said that the bill should be paused until the issue can be studied further. I support that approach. At the city level, uh, I appreciate everything you do for the South, uh, South Asian American population. Thank you.
Thank you. Seema, that is your time. Next we have Manish Deo, followed by Jagannath Burelli, followed by Musa Tariq. Welcome, Manish.
Uh, yes, thank you very much for the time this evening. My name is Manish Dev. I've been in the Bay Area for almost twenty-five years. And I'm here today since I'm very concerned that SB four oh three, as we have heard from a lot of other speakers today, is a deeply flawed bill motivated by everything but the facts on the ground. This bill, as we have seen, is already tearing the communities apart. This will discriminate and even racially target many hardworking and law-abiding minority communities here, particularly the Hindu community. I ask you to put on your common sense hat here, looking at the unanimous support against SB four oh three and vote against SB four oh three. Thank you again for the time this evening.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Jagannath Burelli. Welcome.
Yes, I'm, I'm Jagannath Burelli and, uh, I'm in San Jose, uh, not too far from, uh, Cupertino. I've been in this country for forty-five years and, uh, two of my kids are in mid-thirties. They, they don't know what the caste is. My son is married for twelve years. I don't know, uh, my daughter-in-law's caste yet unless, uh, uh, you know, the, these propositions make me, um, um, reveal her caste and, uh, and talk to her. I have five grandchildren and I'm very much worried about their future and what it's going to do. All I can say is, uh, um, Equality Labs gave a hate speech just before. You shouldn't be allowed to, uh, come and speak here. Um, I, I urge Cupertino to, uh, write to the assembly and, uh, uh, resolve this mess of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Musa Tariq. Welcome, Musa.
Mayor, we are, we are at the
It'll be the last one.
Ninety minute mark?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Be the last one.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Hello, honorable mayor and city council. I hope you are all well. I'm speaking on behalf of the San Francisco Bay Area Chapter of Care, the Council of American Islamic Relations, which is the oldest office of the nation's largest American Muslim civil rights organizations. We urge you to support the addition of caste as a protected category in the city of Cupertino's anti-discrimination ordinance. This would make Cupertino one, one of the first cities in California to support SB four oh three and would end caste discrimination in our state. While California has been a leader in combating this discrimination, historical discrimination faced by immigrants and their descendants has often been overlooked. That discrimination has become more present in the workplace and schools and more. As a state, we must act when targeted communities uproot their lives and seek refuge in California in the pursuit of equality. And that's exactly what this bill does. By adding caste as a protected category, you would be sending a clear message that Cupertino values diversity, inclusion and equity for all its residents and workers. You would also be aligned with the position of numerous civil rights organizations such as the ACLU, San Francisco Lawyers Committee, South Asian Bar Association, American, uh, Asian American Bar Association and Asian Law Caucus and our own organization who have all endorsed this bill and recognize caste as a crucial form of discrimination.
Thank you. That is your time.
Thank you.
So, um, thank you, Madam City Clerk, again. And we're going to conclude the rumor, the Zoomers, um, session too. I want to thank everyone for your passion and also for your time spending here. There were a few moments of, um, emotions, but, uh, we all like got back to really good behavior. So thank you so much. I want to appreciate everyone's, um, uh, being here and everyone's comment. We have public comments for over one and a half hours. So I am going to close the public comments period and I apologize if you did not get to speak either in the room or in the Zoom. room or in the Zoom. We are, I am very happy that we got the time to listen to every one of you, and I'm hoping that you feel that the council has lent our ears to you, and then we have really taken everyone's comment to heart. So I'm going to close the public comments, bring it back to the council for a short deliberation, because I think we heard quite a bit. If my council fellow members are okay, I'm going to start to say three things that really touched my heart today. First is, everyone here is speaking what you feel, and what, what you really, this is what, what you really feel that this bill is affecting you. And the second is, I really want to say, I, I am very impressed with our youngsters, and I know that compassion is to stand in every, in somebody else's shoe and really feel somebody else's feelings. Understand, we have different focus, we have different feelings. The third one is, I want to give you a challenge. When I was in high school, I was in debating, and I was told I have to debate for a principle that I don't believe in. We have to do research, we have to debate to defend that. So if you could do some research, why they're against it? If you can do research, why they're for it? I think that gives you a lot good insight for it. I had so much fun, researched the things I didn't believe believing, and had really defended as a good debate, or said I do believe in it. It gave me some perspectives of what other people's shoes are. Well, how can we really step into that and take a deep dive of why we're opposing it, why are we for it? And I hope that you will go home and do that little exercise, and ask your kids to do that little exercise. It's very healthy. It doesn't mean that it changed my mind in the end, but it does give me that perspective that, yes, there is something there that maybe I didn't see before. So that's what I felt today, and I want to give the floor to my other fellow council members. I deeply felt your passion and your belief, and I am saying that I'm here to learn, and I, I've learned a lot today. Some people may say, this is a waste of time. You're listening to people's repetitive things. It's not. Everybody speaks differently. Even though you have, may have spoken the same theories, the same reasons, but the way you speak, the way you express yourself is different. So I think I got my few minutes, so I'm going to open that to my comments for other colleagues, my other colleagues. Anyone would like to step in? Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
Thank you, Mayor Way. Those were wise words. Thank you to everyone here who's here, who made the effort and taken the time to attend this evening's meeting. Thank you also for all those who sent hundreds and hundreds of emails, left voicemail messages, and appreciate the time you put into that as well. So thank you very much. I just want to make a few personal comments, and Mayor Way, if you'll allow me, and then we can come back and discuss the future course of action.
Absolutely.
Asian Americans comprise 70% of the population in Cupertino. That is the highest of any Bay Area city. We have made significant contributions to cultural and, to the cultural and economic vitality of our region. As an American, Asian American myself, and specifically an Indian American, I share the fears of most in my community that this bill, Senate Bill 403, will have damaging and destructive consequences for my community. Whether this will actually happen or not, I don't know, but my fear remains, not just for people of my generation, but for my children and grandchildren. I am opposed to SB 403. As most of you know by now, it adds caste as a protected category and claims to protect, protect against discrimination. The word caste is a loaded word. I don't know what it means. It is undefined in the bill, and I've had several conversations with so many people in the last few weeks, and I'm not sure that any two of us can agree on what caste is. I am also part of a large Indian American community in the Bay Area, and we don't go around talking about what caste we belong to, or whether this has any relevance at all. And I have to wonder, are people trying to find a solution for non-existent problems? Make no mistake, SB 403 is a bill that singles out and targets one segment of the society. In this case, Asian Americans, specifically Indian Americans and Hindu Americans. At its best, this bill is unnecessary, because there are enough anti-discrimination laws enshrined in the state constitution and in the constitution of the United States. At its worst, it is divisive, it is mean-spirited, and it reinforces false stereotypes. Most importantly, in my opinion, it has the potential to harm all of us, and particularly the generations that come after us. I'll stop here, Mayor, and hopefully I can come back later.
Please, please no applause, because I do believe that everyone have their points, and it's important to recognize who agree with you, but also recognize the validity of the feelings of whoever have different opinions than you are. So thank you so much. Councilmember Foon, please.
I'll echo the thanks to everybody who came and spoke today. I know especially those times when you are speaking for the first time, it is very frightening. If you are speaking from your heart, it is very frightening. If you are outnumbered, it is very frightening. I have been in all of those situations. I've also spent many, many hours now reviewing this bill, literature on the bill. I've watched the entirety of the Assembly Judiciary Committee hearing on the bill. I've read all of the legislative analysis at each stage of the bill's progression through the legislature. And frankly, I also felt that it was really incumbent on me to reach out to friends and people that I respect in our own community here, the South Asian community, in order to better appreciate what their perspectives were. That has been a humbling, enlightening, and sometimes bewildering experience. And it's obvious to me that there are a lot of people in our local community in particular, who have very understandable views that I think have largely been expressed by my colleague, about how this legislation could affect them and their loved ones, and therefore, how the legislation makes them feel specifically singled out, targeted, stereotyped, stigmatized. It's also clear to me that there are others who see the bill through the lens of the harm of invidious discrimination that they honestly hope it would prevent. And I think that finding the balance between those two competing interests is extremely difficult, and I don't pretend to have an answer to it. What is very plain, however, is the degree of division that the bill engenders in our South Asian community in particular, and you saw that tonight. I don't want to see any part of our community experience this sort of visceral division. So whatever comes out of our deliberation today, I want our community to feel that we've honored their lived experiences, and I want to ensure that we are offering useful and helpful guidance to our legislative delegation in Sacramento that gives them the best tools to find a good solution. Ultimately, the legislation that we are considering tonight is theirs. It's not our own. We don't have a vote. We do have a voice, and when we use it, I think that we need to use it thoughtfully and prudently.
Thank you, Councilmember Foon. Councilmember Chow, please.
So I think I recognize that there are caste discrimination, definitely there, there are incidents of caste discrimination, where there are all kinds of discrimination that do happen. And when they are documented, and we should definitely address any of this discrimination, and they are, and then I would like to also acknowledge that the author of SB 403 and the district attorney, Jeff Rosen, of Santa Clara County, both acknowledge and recognize the existing anti-discrimination law. Section 51 of California Civil Code already address discrimination based on ancestry. And there is already legal basis to prosecute any kind of discrimination based on perceived ancestry or heritage. So that's the basis. 403 does not expand the law or change the law at all, but it adds the word caste. What does that mean? Like many speakers acknowledge that they don't even know. I looked it up. I find out there are actually caste-based systems in every culture. You have caste-based system in Japan, in China, in Africa. That's the kind of system that has been in the, throughout the history, and there are discrimination based on class difference, caste difference, even a city who live in one, people who come from one city would discriminate against people who did not come from that city. They all exist, but unfortunately, in U.S., the term caste has been negatively used, used to portray Hindu Americans, and that contribute to a lot of the Hindu phobia. And there are also documented cases of Hindu phobia and anti-Hindu hate crimes. So including a word that has very negative connotation, that no one really knows what it means, in California legislation, that's really a step backwards. That's not really helping us to build a more inclusive and more equal society. So I think we should all reject any attempts to stereotype or stigmatize any individual based on their perceived ancestry, as this contradicts the very principle of equality and fairness that we hold dear, and the very principle of section 51, the Unruled Civil Rights Act, that SB 403 is trying to amend. So I don't see any value of including the word caste in any California legislation. I oppose that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Councilmember Moore?
So first, I want to thank everyone for coming out, and I want to commend the council for providing this opportunity. I, we might be the only city which has taken this topic up to have a conversation and allow everyone's voice to be heard, and I think that's valuable for the entire community that, that we want to hear what people have to say. This is a complicated and difficult topic, which has a history that we are all learning more about. I appreciate all of the additional information that was brought up this evening about the history of the caste system and the, the impacts in India of having British rule on that system. I think that was also enlightening as well. One thing that bothered me, there's a few, one thing that bothered me within the SB 35 text is the, the definition of ancestry, and I'm going to go off on a little bit of a tangent here, because the focus has been on India, the caste system there, but this definition of ancestry, it gets kind of complicated, in my opinion. So ancestry includes, but is not limited to lineal descent, heritage, parentage, and they have the word caste or any inherited social status. And this, this gets complicated. We have very complex families. You know, my, my mother was adopted, and my grandmother was raised in an orphanage. What is my, what is my heritage and parentage? It's, it's complicated. In, in Europe, I have Eastern European ancestry. That's, that's considered a lower class in other parts of Europe. I don't wear that here. That's, that's in the past. So this definition made me think about, you know, what, what my ancestry is, what this, this labeling is as well, and that bothers me. And the, the lines here are blurring, as each generation stays here longer, and we, we're living amongst one another, and we're learning from each other. And as each generation's been here longer, we don't want to wear labels. I'm concerned about this labeling of people with regards to their ancestry, and that our focus has been specifically on this, this added definition within ancestry. I think they were intending to be helpful, but adding some of these words, the lineal descent, the heritage, the parentage, any inherited social status, and then, of course, adding caste. I think it, it, to me, that's all troubling. I like people to feel free about their ability to move within our society. And if you came here, and you were, like, my great-grandparents were illiterate, and my father had a PhD, he was not constrained by anything, and I want people to feel that as well. My suggestion for this council would be that we oppose this bill unless it is amended with the word caste removed. That being said, I still have issues with the ancestry definition which was added in. So I would like to hear what other people's thoughts are on it. Perhaps it is the best definition they could come up with. This came from the judicial analysis. So I'd like to hear some more opinions about that. But ultimately, I share the fears that this is going to cause damaging consequences. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. So I'm going to allow myself to, a few minutes to, I like all my colleagues, you know, they say from their heart and what they learn from all of you, and I think each one of you has a point, and I just want to share a more personal note with you. I understand discrimination still exists in the United States. We, we have to admit that. And I understand, you know, we are all citizens. None of us here is discriminating against anybody. Okay? So I want to go back to my first opening. Let's not let this divide our community. We are one community together. We do have different feelings. We have different shoes. We come with different baggages. So I want to tell you a personal story, if you'll allow me. So I grew up in the United, I didn't grow up here. I came here, but I never felt I was discriminated against. But I met a friend who was 20 years older than I am, and he was very strong about whether something he wanted to go out there, he would just, you know, raise his hands and do things. And I said, why? I didn't feel discriminated. He sat me down. He said, he grew up in San Francisco, and at that time, it says, parks has signs that's no Chinese in talks. So he said, he, he was discriminated against. So he was so strong about anything that he had to fight for, you know, for, for equal rights, which I did not have that passion. But I learned from him that it did exist. So here, we're, we're here again. We're talking about civil rights, and I believe everyone of here in our room are not discriminating anybody. So let's have that premise in hand. And I like to propose, I am going to let my colleague, who is Indian American, take the lead, because I trust my colleague's wisdom and her feelings. And so I would like to listen to Vice Mayor Sheila's proposal on this very challenging issue, but also it's not challenging, because no one in this room is discriminating against anything. So that premise is, is always there. Sorry if I put you on the spot. Sorry if I put you on the spot.
Thank you, Mayway. So what I would, I I thought we could discuss the next course of action. And I would like the city to issue a proclamation emphasizing the values we hold dear as as members of the Cupertino community. And also keeping in mind, there are a couple of things about SB four oh three. And and you you heard how I felt about it. But I also know that the bill is still going through the legislative process, that there are being changes made at every step and that even it's going to the Appropriations Committee and still has to go to the Assembly floor, that there could be language changes that could happen between now and then. While I'm opposed to SB four oh three in its present form, there is no guarantee that the divisive language that I I feel it includes will be changed as as the bill makes its way through the legislative process. I also want to make sure the proclamation includes more than just SB four oh three. One of my fears is that maybe six months from now, another bill will come up targeting some other segment of society or or some other personal characteristic. And I want to make sure that the proclamation we issued today will cover all those experiences as well, so that once and for all, we have a proclamation that clearly states what the city's position is on issues like discrimination.
Do you have a?
I I do have a format. And if I could give it to the city clerk to put it on the. And one thing I forgot to mention was, maybe if I could direct the city attorney and the city manager to sort of take this language and sort of fashion it any which way you want. Make sure the relevant stuff that we all agreed to is is still there. But just do it the right way that the proclamation needs to be done.
Yeah, I I yeah, if you'd like that, I'd recommend that you include that in any motion you make.
Okay, if if I can just. Thank you.
Video, can you?
Yes, we can see. Oh, can can the public see?
You like to read it?
Oh, sure. I should read?
Yeah, yes. That's your motion, right?
Okay. Yeah, so as you can see on the on this display, which I okay. I would like that we make a motion to direct the city manager and the city attorney to prepare a proclamation which contains the following language. Whereas Cupertino values its commitment to diversity in our city. Whereas we believe that the principles of human rights and equal protection against discrimination apply to all sections and communities in the city. Whereas we take immense pride in the fact that almost seventy percent of our population is Asian-American. Whereas it is our obligation as city council members to do everything we can to foster a climate of inclusivity and dignity for all individuals regardless of their background and ethnicity. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Cupertino opposes discrimination in all forms and will vigorously oppose any laws in the future that could intentionally or unintentionally result in racial or ethnic profiling, violation of civil rights, and stigmatizing any one segment of our society.
Um, so that is your motion?
That is my motion, and I'm open to.
May I have a second before we?
The rest of my, the council.
May I have a second before we we make a discussions?
I will second that for discussion purpose.
Okay, it's being made and seconded?
May I suggest in addition that to authorize the the city attorney to to review the motion as deformed and and make any changes necessary for to make sure that the that's the motion is clear and complies with all legal requirements? Or the the proclamation is clear and complies with all legal requirements? And the seconder is agreeable to that?
Yeah, so we need the motioner to accept the terms of the what city.
Both the both the movement and the and the the seconder, yes.
Yes, and the seconder to approve it.
Yeah, but I do have a question.
Sure, we can open up discussion now.
Okay.
Member Chow and Councilmember Moore?
So this statement does not address SB four oh three, which is the item on the agenda. Is it appropriate?
I I think it's within.
For this kind of proclamation that's not on the agenda?
I think it is it is within the scope of of what's agendized because it's germane to the the concerns that led this this item to be on the agenda.
So I like to read the agenda.
This doesn't.
So let me read it. Consider taking a position in support of or in opposition of or otherwise regarding or in response to send a bill four oh three. So otherwise, is this, is that how we clarify it?
I I think it's it's fairly clear that this proclamation is in response to SB four oh three. We just heard, you know, an hour and a half of of comments on the issues raised.
Okay, Councilmember Chow, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Chow, are you done with your?
I do have a substitute motion that I would like.
Sure, go ahead.
The council would entertain. So let me share my screen. I drafted a proclamation. Started with shorter, but it ends up to be longer like I always. So it's a proclamation against Hindu phobia and caste stigmatization. I start with stating existing law. Cupertino City Council declares that we stand against all forms of discrimination and affirms our unwavering commitment to promoting equality and inclusivity within our community. We fully support the UNRWA, I don't know how to pronounce that. Yes, UNRWA Civil Rights Act, section fifty-one of California Civil Code, which states all persons within the jurisdiction of this state are free and equal. And no matter what their sex, race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, disability, medical condition, genetic information, marital status, sexual orientation, citizenship, primary language, or immigration status are entitled to the full and equal accommodation, advantages, facilities, privileges, or services in all business establishment of every kind of whatsoever. So this include already ancestry. Furthermore, the city Cupertino City Council vehemently oppose any stigmatization or stereotyping of individuals based on any of the aforementioned attributes. We firmly believe that every member of our community deserves to be treated with dignity and respect without fear of prejudice and bias. We acknowledge the rise of Hindu phobia and the challenges faced by Asian Indian American community in Cupertino, California, and the United States. We are deeply concerned about any documented incidents of discrimination based on perceived caste or ancestry, as well as any recorded incidents of anti-Hindu hate crimes. Such acts or intolerance and discrimination prohibited by UNRWA Civil Rights Act have no place in our diverse and harmonious community. Although there are caste-based systems and discrimination throughout history and in almost every culture and in every continent, the term caste has been unfortunately misused to negatively portray the culture of Hindu Americans, which contributes to more Hindu phobia. We reject any attempts to stereotype or stigmatize individuals based on their perceived ancestry, as this contradicts the principle of equality and fairness that we hold dear. We express our strong opposition to SB four oh three and any legislation that employs wording with negative connotation to stigmatize and stereotype any group, including the term caste. We believe that the.
You please refrain from applause.
To California law fails to contribute meaningfully to the existing anti-discrimination law, the UNRWA Civil Rights Act. Instead, it perpetuates harmful stereotypes and prejudices, contrary to the fundamental principle of the UNRWA Civil Rights Act. As members of the Cupertino City Council, we are committed to fostering an inclusive community where all residents come together to support one another free from the burden of outdated cultural heritages. We envision a city that cherishes diversity, embraces inclusivity, and celebrates the unique contributions of every individual.
Thank you. So that is your motion? And may I have a second, please?
Moore, second?
And may I request that the same language regarding the city attorney's authority to review the the proclamation for form and legality be added to the substitute motion?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion. We're open, you accept.
Need to acknowledge the city attorney's.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now we're open to discussion on the substitute motion. I I like to speak to it. I think the 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 essence of Councilmember Chow's motion is there. I feel it's it's just it's very complicated. I think it says a lot of things that's real specific. And I understand that Vice Mayor Mohan's motion actually addresses a lot of them without being really specific. And I understand the desire of a lot of our constituents and I understand the desire of someone who feels differently. To me, this is how I see things. You you all know that no council members has, this is a Cupertino City Council is looking at this because we want to hear from our residents and also from people who have different opinions. And to me, it's a very, as I say, it's an educational journey for me. And I do believe that. I remember I voted no to put this on the agenda because I do feel that we have not much control over it because it is in the state level. However, I am happy we did it because we got to listen to a lot of people. I like always, if you know me, like simple, good, to-the-point proclamations instead of a proclamation that's very complicated. So my only concern with Councilmember Chow's proposal, it is is pretty complicated. So that's my comment. And I am open up to Councilmember Frum and Councilmember Moore.
I I would echo everything that the mayor just offered. And I would very much like to hear from the Vice Mayor on the topic, especially because she made the initial motion. And my sense from knowing her is that she probably spent a good deal of time and energy and thought in it. And I would like to afford her the dignity of deference on the topic.
Councilmember Moore, then followed by Vice Mayor Mohan.
Thank you. So I was wondering if I could see the the original motion again? That it is a proclamation? Because I I do not recall seeing the sentence that says that the city of Cupertino opposes SB four oh three. So if we could have that back up on the screen, I'd I'd like to, yeah, okay. So that is that that to me, that's what a very critical sentence is missing here. And my suggestion during my little talk about this was that my suggestion was that the city of Cupertino opposes SB four oh three unless amended with the word caste removed. And I did want to hear some comments about the ancestry issue. But still, the point being made that I would want to see that SB four oh three be opposed in this original motion. If I if that is not going to happen, then I am in support of Councilmember Chow's motion proclamation, which is more complicated. It was, by the way, for this particular agenda item, having served on the Legislative Review Committee for a couple of years, when we would see something like SB four oh three or any of the other bills are the positions that we would be taking would be, we're either going to oppose it, oppose it unless it's amended, or we're going to or support it or support with amendments, or we might just take a watch position. So I'm a little taken aback by the the proclamation concept that we're looking at here. I would have, it would have been my preference that we were going to be a little bit more direct and say, we're going to oppose it or we're going to support it. And what we want to see changed to to make it something that we wanted to to feel good about, if there's some way to to do that. So it is my preference that that original motion have the the line in there that we are opposing SB four oh three. I don't think it's implied in that proclamation.
Council, Vice Mayor Mohan?
Just wanted to address a couple of things that Councilmember Moore brought up. SB four oh three, the the words SB four oh three does not show in in the proclamation that I suggested. And and also, just to go back a little bit, even the proclamation itself was was my suggestion. So it wasn't, it isn't like I'm not willing to listen to other points of view. But the reason, and I and I agree with the sentiments expressed by the words that Councilmember Chow read out and and presented to the public. But my problem and my my concern, not so much a problem, is that I thought SB four oh three could change its its colors by the time it ends up at at the governor's desk. And I didn't want to commit to opposing SB four oh three now in in the form of a proclamation because it could change. And it could change dramatically, or maybe it doesn't, wouldn't change at all. But right now, that whole process is uncertain. And another reason I didn't want to include SB four oh three was six months down the line, as I said, there could be another bill, hypothetically, maybe SB four oh five, and which targets another segment of society. And I wanted to make sure that the proclamation we issued covers eventualities like those as well and not restricted restricted to what we are seeing today.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mohan. And then you have Vice Mayor, Councilmember Chow has your light on. Do you want to say something? You have two minutes left. Go ahead.
Okay, um, so I modeled my letter, actually, after the opposition letters the city usually write to oppose a state bill that usually includes a lot of detailed content and reasons on why we support or oppose a bill. So it's not a very short declaration, that usually is not. And I do think it's important that we take a stand against adding caste in any legislation. So I'm, if the council would like a very short. So if the council would like a very short letter, I could propose, I guess, a friendly amendment to Vice Mayor Mohan's version, adding one paragraph from mine, which is, would read something like this. "We express our strong opposition to any legislation that employs wording with negative connotations to stigmatize and stereotype any group, including the term caste." So this means other things are covered, too. "And we believe that the addition of caste to California law fails to contribute meaningfully to the existing anti-discrimination law, the Unruh Civil Rights Act. Instead, it perpetuates harmful stereotypes and prejudices, contrary to the fundamental principles of Unruh Civil Rights." And then, "We oppose SB 403 in its current form unless it is amended to remove the mention of caste."
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. I would like to speak on the...
So that was a friendly amendment, so I wonder if I, is it okay to propose that now, or I should do it after we vote on my substitute?
No, so both motions are on the table, so you can propose a friendly amendment to the main motion now, and then we would vote on the substitute motion first.
Okay, so then I would need the motion maker to see if you accept this friendly amendment to the main motion.
So I think we're still at a comment period. Can I make my comment first? Okay, so I want to make it very clear, that Vice Mayor Chow made her position very clear when she said, when she made her statement. She is personally opposing the bill. And I believe she wrote letters to the legislators already, as Vice Mayor herself, representing herself. So her position is very, very clear. And I do admire her for making a proclamation that doesn't include what her personal feelings is, but to make it a general proclamation that's going to prevent everything else that's come after this. It does inhibit, it does say very clearly that any forms of discrimination is prohibited, that the council will disapprove. I like her form, because it's simple, and it says what the council is going to go forward. I understand the desire of a lot of constituents is to make sure it's specific, but I do understand that when we step on other people's shoe. And also, I understand very clearly, it doesn't matter what we are doing today, we might not change what's happening in Sacramento. So in order for Council Vice Mayor Chow to make a proclamation that's going to last forever, that represents what the Cupertino City Council represents, that's what I would support, because I looked through my vice mayor, she is part of the Indian American community, she made her position very, very clear. There was no doubt that what she believes in about SB 403. I'm going to stop it here. After me. Councilmember Moore, you have about two minutes, too.
Okay. Question for the city attorney. May I make a second substitute motion here?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you.
But can I first get my sub-friendly amendment? I have not gotten confirmation from the motion maker.
It would be up to the chair to recognize the speaker.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Mohan, I think Councilmember Chow made a friendly amendment to your first motion where she seconded. Would you accept her friendly amendment?
So this is a paragraph I read, if that's more clear.
If I could see that paragraph on the screen. You know, I agree with the sentiments expressed in this paragraph, and I would be okay with maybe just including the word caste in my original motion. And I'm not sure that takes away from anything you have said, Councilmember Chow. I'm almost sure that what you're saying sort of restates what I have said. And if you don't agree with me...
So you agree we could add the mention SB 403 and caste?
No, I did not say SB 403.
We don't mention 403, but we...
Yeah, right, because I think, and I'm sorry, may I wait if I could speak? I thought if we could, if we said SB 403, that would really limit us to future such laws.
But that's what's on the agenda.
Okay, so let's, Vice Mayor, decide whether she wants to accept your friendly amendment or make her own friendly amendment.
I would be okay with including the term caste in my original motion.
So, so would you like to, so how are we going to do this?
So I would, if both the Councilmember Chow and Vice Mayor Mohan are open to it, I would recommend amending the vice mayor's original motion to, and to include additional direction to the city attorney to incorporate the sentiment expressed in Councilmember Chow's additional language, including, you know, a mention of the term caste in a revised, in a proclamation, you know, to include additional provision in the proclamation that addresses that.
Okay, so why don't I make a friendly amendment, too? Okay, so I really like simple languages, so with your original proposal...
Point of order, mayor. So, I think, well, we have, that's not the problem, but I think we should, we should, the maker of the motion should decide, and the second of the motion should decide whether they're accepting that friendly amendment. And then you could make your own amendment.
Okay.
Is that me?
Yes.
Okay. So I accept Councilmember Chow's sentiments about including the word caste in my original motion.
Okay.
But not SB 403, for the reason I stated earlier, that it limits us. And that doesn't have to be the proclamation.
Councilmember Chow, are you comfortable with how I framed the intention of your amendment?
Yeah, I like the way you framed it, that you would include the sentiment included, and you will include the caste. So my understanding now is, the mayor would like to propose an amendment, so she should propose, and I and Councilmember Mohan, my Vice Mayor Mohan can then decide if we would accept that friendly amendment.
Yes, the mayor now has the floor, and I apologize for interrupting her.
No, no problem. This is getting very challenging. Okay, so my friendly amendment is real simple. Councilmember Vice Mayor Mohan's original motion plus instruct, ask the attorney to add caste to the motion as appropriate.
I think that that's...
Because I personally do not like complicated things, like strongly opposed and stigmatized. I did not like Vice Mayor, Councilmember Chow's language. I feel that our city attorney can make a better, not better, make a legally appropriate incorporation into caste into Council Vice Mayor Mohan's original proclamation.
So your friendly amendment would be, you know, would be an amendment to strike the additional text that Councilmember Chow has added to the motion through her amendment, and merely direct the city attorney to include language that makes reference to caste in a revised proclamation?
Yes.
Okay.
And now, it's up to you and you to accept, because you were the original mayor.
I don't accept it.
And I accept it.
Then the amendment does not, the amendment is not on the floor.
So why don't I make another substitute motion as that? I would, I'm going to make a substitute motion to original Vice Mayor Mohan's original language, plus authorize the city attorney to...
Point of order. I believe Councilmember Moore already made, indicated that she wants to make a substitute motion, so I don't know.
Okay, we can do that. Okay, so I'll let you make a substitute motion first. Now, let's clear, we have original motion that's being, I'm a little confused now, sorry.
Yeah, so we have an original motion, a substitute motion. There can be up to three motions on the floor under Rosenberg's Rules of Orders. As chair, you know, you can either make your motion or recognize Councilmember Moore and allow her to make her motion.
So the one I want to ask is, Vice Mayor Mohan's original motion, friendly amendment, I don't think she really accepted that friendly amendment, or did she?
It seemed as if she did, but she would be the one, best person to answer that question.
Yeah.
I'm sort of lost track of what's...
I apologize. Okay, that's okay.
I wanted to make sure that you knew that the word caste, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I wanted to make sure that the word caste would be included in my original motion.
Yes, okay.
Just to complicate things further, we will need a motion to, it's after 11:00, so we're going to need a motion to extend time to continue debate.
I'm going to make my councilmembers to, can we extend until 11:20?
Some of it.
Okay, may I have a second? We're going to extend our time to 11:20.
I seconded.
Okay, so it's been moved, seconded, let's vote by light, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, I'll let you make the motion.
Okay, thank you. So just to kind of simplify things, my motion would be that the city council takes an opposed position on SB 403 unless amended, removing the word caste, and that we direct the letter to the legislature be written, which incorporates both Councilmember Chow and Vice Mayor Mohan's proclamations.
Okay, may I have a second? If there's no...
Second, but I don't quite understand.
Okay, I would prefer if you don't understand, do my second, please.
So you mean include both proclamations in a letter?
Through the mayor. So what we're doing is we're, the recommended action is that we consider taking a position in support of, opposition to, or otherwise regarding, or in response to SB 403. My motion very clearly takes a position, and then you're going to incorporate, we're asking staff to incorporate both proclamations, because there's good information in both, into a letter for the legislature, so that they know what our position is here. So it's simply because, for ease of information, we've provided a lot of meat in those two documents that they can write a letter with. But bottom line is that we've got an opposed position clearly stated, and we're not watering down what it is.
So oppose or oppose unless amended?
Oppose unless amended, removing the word caste.
Okay, and then the staff will draft the letter similar to the letter have been drafted for bills?
Correct.
And then considering, would combine the sentiment expressed in both proclamation?
Through the mayor, precisely. Yeah, I would recommend that the speakers be recognized by the mayor.
Yeah. So we need a second for Councilmember Moore's motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we're open for discussion. Councilmember Frum, have your light on?
Again, in the spirit of the dignity of deference that I've offered the vice mayor, you know, as to what her view is on it, if she would prefer her language and the version that the mayor was going to offer, I would suggest to her that since we can only have so many motions on the table at once, that she withdraw hers and offer it as a substitute.
Through the mayor. What exactly does that accomplish?
It would allow us to, through the mayor, it would allow us to consider your preferred version of the motion.
We can only have three motions on the table, so if you withdraw, I'm going to let see your attorney explain it.
Yeah, so there are, up to three motions can be on the table. The maker of a motion can withdraw a motion at any time. You know, if your motion is withdrawn, and a new substitute motion is made, the last substitution motion that's made would be considered first and voted on.
Okay, so what is the substitute motion that we are voting on?
Not yet. I was going to make one, but now I can't, because we have three motions on the table already.
Okay, so I withdraw my original motion.
I would disagree. I like your motion and our friendly amendment, and I think...
Your attorney, please.
Point out that Councilmember Chow is not recognized, and the maker of the motion can withdraw the motion.
So my question for city attorney is, if the maker of the motion withdraws the motion, the second cannot insist?
That's correct. It's the maker's decision.
Thank you.
I don't understand why Vice Mayor Mohan has to withdraw her motion.
She doesn't have to, she chooses to.
I didn't have to, but I...
So again, I'd encourage councilmembers to be recognized before speaking.
Councilmember Frum, I think your light is on.
Yes, procedurally, the next step would be for the vice mayor to offer the motion that she intended that would incorporate the things that the mayor intended to add.
So why don't I make the third motion, substitute motion, then? I would like to make the motion to approve Vice Mayor Mohan's proclamation, but authorize the city attorney to add caste into the proclamation as appropriate. That would be my substitute motion. And I'm looking for a second.
I'll second that.
So open for discussions.
So how is that, so mayor, can I speak?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry.
How is your motion different from Vice Mayor Mohan's earlier motion?
This is the motion that I'm making.
But how is that different from, maybe Vice Mayor Mohan can explain, what do you see is different between your original motion and the new one?
The different motion is, your friendly amendment includes your language in there. I personally don't like really complicated language, and because caste is the one item that we want to put it on, so I'm making it very simple. We're going to, my motion is to approve Vice Mayor Mohan's proclamation, but authorize the city attorney to add caste into it as appropriate. And it's seconded by Vice Mayor Mohan. So if there are no questions, Councilmember Moore?
Yes, so I'd like to understand what, given our recommended action, what is the position that motion has with regards to Senate Bill 403? I cannot tell if you are in support or opposition, or if you are just taking a watch position on that. Also, there was an earlier statement about wanting to wait and see what happens to the bill. Well, what happens to the bills that are going through is that they get changed based on the positions and the information that our legislators get from the public. So we need to make a position to let them know how we feel. I still have the floor, thank you, mayor.
Can I have the city attorney explain? This subject doesn't, yes, it says support in opposition or otherwise regarding or response to Senate Bill 403. Is the current motion response to Senate Bill 403?
The current motion is germane to the agenda item, as you read it, yes.
I hope that answers your question, Councilmember Moore.
Mayor Way, you just spoke over me, so I could, I should have done a point of order. No, it does not take a position for or against. It's, if anything, I would say it walks around it without being direct. And I, you like simple language? Simple language would be you support, or oppose, or you want to take a watch position. One of those would be simple. This is not simple. It's vague.
Thank you. And any other comments? And any other comments? Councilmember Chow?
A question, how many motions, what motions do we have on the table right now?
We have three.
So what's three motions?
The one I made and Councilmember, Vice Mayor Mohan seconded, the one Councilmember Moore made and you seconded, and then the last.
That's true.
That's true, and the last one is the one.
That was withdrawn.
No, there was another one.
Was there a third one?
Yes, there was another one that she made and you make a friendly amendment to add, but that's.
That was the original one. That's the same one.
But that has two friendly amendments on it.
But that's the same motion, right?
There's Councilmember Chow's original mo- what Councilmember Chow's originally, what was the for the first substitute motion, and then there was a second substitute motion made by by Councilmember Moore, and then then the mayor's third substitute motion is now the third motion on the, third motion on the table.
Oh, so there is the, so the three motion now, one is the one that I proposed with my version of the proclamation.
Correct, yes, that was made.
Oh, that one I would likely, I would like to withdraw. So yeah, that, because with that one, I would like to withdraw, and then now I would like to make another substitute motion. That I, like I said, I think I don't under.
Can you make a motion, please?
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that we prepare two letters. One specifically on SB 403, that oppose SB 403 unless it's amended with the wording of cast removed, and express the reasons that why we think cast in is a negative connotation that will stigmatize and stereotype our Cupertino community. And second, I understand Vice Mayor Mohan would like a more general letter that cover more. I think we can have two letters. One is general, that covers more, but one address the specific issue on the agenda today as before three. So that's my motion.
Okay, may I have a second?
Through the mayor, I'd like to second that, and I like Councilmember Chow's motion so well, I'd like to withdraw mine in support of hers.
So let's have a vote, if you don't know, Councilmember Frun?
Again, in the spirit of of the dignity of deference, I would like to hear the Vice Mayor's opinion.
Vice Mayor Mohan, we are actually looking forward to to you.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure there's anything else I want to say. I oppose SB 403, I oppose all mention to cast. I'd like to keep it not general, but but inclusive, just so that we are prepared for similar eventualities down the line.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mohan, and I'd like to echo that. I look forward to my, the lead on my Vice Mayor Mohan, and I want to say one more time, she made it very clear she's opposing to SB 403. And so we have, we're gonna vote on Councilmember Chow's motion first, which is to have two proposals on the table. One is to oppose 403 unless amended, or and one is to approve Council Vice Mayor Mohan's um.
General, more general.
Uh, yes, more everlasting proclamation. Okay, so if that's clear enough, can we vote on it? We have four minutes.
Can I make a very, one final comment?
Okay, please.
So I think it's important that we take a strong stand to tonight. It's very easy to be wishy-washy, and I hope that this council today.
Please, please, no, okay, please.
Is clear that we oppose SB 403, and our action make that clear, and we are against any kind of discrimination, including cast discrimination.
Thank you very much. And so can we start a vote, please? Councilmember Moore?
I'm sorry, I I just want to clarify that the the motion by the the Vice Mayor, which you substituted, Mayor Way, that it does not take an opposed position to SB 403. So the vote that we're going to take first clearly states that we oppose SB 403. The other motion does not clearly state that, so I want to make sure everybody understands that. Thank you.
Thank you, I think we understand it. So Madam City Clerk, you do know the motion that's on the table?
This is for your motion.
No, for Councilmember Chow's motion.
Yes, yes, you're correct, yes. Her new motion to prepare two letters on SB 403, and opposing it unless amend amendments are made, removing the word cast, and the reason why there are, it's a negative connotation, and another general letter that covers, that covers the Vice Mayor's, covers, addresses Vice Mayor's sentiments.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, so the second letter also.
If you keep clarifying, we're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to vote on these motions, we've got two minutes.
So let's let's vote by light, if that's okay.
Okay, yeah.
The motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
So we're going to, my motion, that's accept Councilmember Vice Mayor Mohan's proclamation, but authorize city attorney to put cast into it as appropriate, and I think a second by Vice Mayor Mohan, right? And I'd like to, we can, I I'd like to say one more thing. We're not here to really, I want here to say that I respect my fellow councilmember Vice Mayor Mohan, because she is our representative in the Indian American community. And I understand there is a desire for the for the council to take very strong stance. However, I take Vice Mayor Mohan's words very seriously, that she is opposing it as the bill it is, but she's willing to make Cupertino City Council have her proclamation that's gonna be inclusive in the future. So I I do believe that individual councilmembers, like Councilmember Chow, Vice Councilmember Moore, or Vice Mayor Mohan, really can write individual letters strongly against 403. As a council, I do believe we need to be inclusive, we need to be really taking care of the whole community, the whole, what's going to happen here, now, and in the future. That is reason I made my proposal, and that is reason I am going to support my own proposal. Okay. Chow, one minute, Councilmember, oh, okay.
Council, do, we're gonna need another motion to extend the meeting.
So another.
Motion to extend the meeting for how long?
11:25, five more minutes.
Five minutes, maybe?
Five minutes.
Five more minutes, we really need to wrap this up. Okay, so one minute for you, and then we're gonna vote.
Okay, who second? Oh.
No.
We want to extend the meeting.
We're gonna vote on the substitute motion that I made. If there's no more comment, I would like to.
I have a question on your substitute motion, because I'm unclear, what exactly is the wording? Is that going to say we oppose any legislation containing the word cast?
It is very clear that I am.
It's unclear.
I I made a motion to approve Council Vice Mayor Mohan's proclamation with authorization to ask city attorney to add cast into the proclamation as appropriate, and that's been seconded.
What does that mean?
That is exactly what it means.
So that does not include opposing legislation, including the word cast?
That doesn't. We're okay with it, let's.
So I don't know what we are voting on.
Is this the motion to extend, Mayor? Who who seconded that?
Vice Ma- Councilmember Chow, and then, I forgot who seconded.
No one seconded.
Oh, sorry, I'll second it, and let's vote, we're gonna, extension, we're voting on extension.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And then let's vote on the substitute motion that I made, that's seconded by Vice Mayor Mohan.
But what I, what what exactly is the wording change, I don't understand, in adding cast where?
I think I think that's already been explained.
What? I don't.
That's been explained multiple times.
Could you, city attorney, since you will be revising this, could you explain what you understand as the motion?
The 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 motion is to revise the proclamation that was prepared by the Vice Mayor to to in- include a a reference to cast and 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 opposition to 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 characterizing to 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 anything that 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 characterizes discrimination based on cast. I feel like I have enough direction between what you said and what's been discussed here to 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 adequately convey the sentiment that council has expressed. And and I and I concur with the mayor's mayor's statement that that there would be no direct mention of SB 403, based on my understanding of the motion.
So then, so it sounds like the this has been changed into totally in line with SB 403, to.
So.
To to mon- to legalize cast as a protective class. I I don't, and I don't feel comfortable unless we, I see.
Well, then don't vote for, don't vote for the motion.
Yeah, so I'm ready for a vote.
And then I would like, can I propose another substitute motion? I can't, right, under the.
I will, if you, I will, I will, I will, I will strongly recommend that council suspend the meeting at 11:25, if you propose another substitute motion.
So I motion to extend the meeting another five minutes.
Through the mayor's second.
Let's vote by light.
The motion carries with Frun voting no.
Please, Councilmember Chow?
Yeah, I think if we are only adding cast, that, okay, my motion will be reviving Vice Mayor Mohan's original motion, which is her, her original description, including the sentiment expressed in my statement, which the city attorney will include, because I think that's very different from just adding cast.
Just made the motion, please, thank you.
Okay.
So the motion, motion is being made, do we have a second?
I'm sorry, could, I have to ask, could you please repeat the, repeat that?
Okay, the Vice Mayor's original proclamation?
Yes.
And including the sentiment expressed in Councilmember Chow's friendly amendment and mentioning the term cast.
With a, with any mention of SB 403?
Um, there is no mention of 403, but there is, so here is, I think there there was, let me share this. I wish she could mention 403, but it seems Vice Mayor Mohan is unwilling to, so it will include this sentiment that was initially proposed as a friendly amendment, and then Vice Mayor Mohan mentioned that she is willing to include that as long as we express the sentiment in line with this paragraph.
That's in line, the yellow one? Okay, so do we have a second, please? If not, we're gonna move forward with the motion, we are four minutes away from.
Yes, I I'm sorry, Councilmember Chow, I believe you should have gone with an opposition substitute motion on SB 403.
Excuse me, are you accepting the, are you seconded?
I I think it muddies the water, so I can't, I can't second it.
So you would support if we mention SB 403?
Okay, so let's not, and let's not discuss on the.
Okay, so I accept the friendly amendment to include.
Councilmember Moore actually did not say a friendly amendment.
Okay, then I amend my motion to include we oppose SB 403, unless amended.
I I accept.
Okay, so let's vote on the motion. Oh, have not voted, I apologize.
The motion, the motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
So let's go to the, my substitute motion that's I made, and then seconded by Vice Mayor Mohan. Can we vote on it, please?
The motion carries with Chow abstaining and Moore voting no.
I abstain because I I'm unsure of the language.
And the meeting is adjourned, thank you.